Good afternoon, council. I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for October 16th, 2025 to order with adoption of the agenda as amended to include 90.1A to item 13 when we go on camera. So someone want to get them up to the top of the floor. Senator, councillor, chair, all in favor. Motion's carried. Adoption in the minutes of the committee of the whole from September 11th. Councillor Palmer, seconded by councillor Dublin, all in favor. Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Seeing none, I am going to move right on to delegations and presentations. And I'm Gibson here, infant development program coordinator for Community Connections. So you'd like to come up to the podium and just introduce yourself to everybody and then we'll let you start.
Okay, hello. My name's Emma. I'm the infant development consultant at Community Connections. So I'm here to speak to you guys today about the early intervention program that we have in Revelstoke and the inadequacy of the program and if there might be anything that you could do to help with this. And the reason that I wanted to raise it was because through the channels that we had been trying to raise it with, we haven't had any success. But just to kind of give you, I know I submitted some paperwork to you all, but just to kind of give you a bit of a brief overview. Early intervention services are a specific service that is provided through the Ministry of Children and Families. It's a contract that's awarded to different communities. The contract itself is to provide therapeutic support to families with children from age zero to six who may have a developmental delay, any concerns about really any development or perhaps have an official diagnosis of something, for instance, like autism or cerebral palsy or have had a birth defect, anything really. The services that are often provided are physiotherapy and occupational therapy. Some communities will also get speech and language, but we don't have that in Revelstoke here. We do have that provided through interior health, but again, we don't actually have anyone in position here to provide that service, other than a pediatric outreach team, which again, isn't sufficient, but I can explain a bit more about that. The service is supposed to be quite holistic and support families in a way that is meaningful but is also evidence-based. So when we all think about physiotherapy, we think about perhaps going and giving, being given some exercises you're supposed to do that will help any sort of recovery or rehabilitation. In this instance, for families, it's not just perhaps providing exercises, it's also providing supports to think about things like how a child needs to be able to sit and what support that might look like, or for instance, how someone is going to be able to walk and any equipment that they might need. That's the sort of depth and breadth of services. There is some guidelines that the ministry themselves have put in place showing that services are supposed to be very all-encompassing. The problem that we have here in Revelstoke is that we have been allocated 4.83 hours of physiotherapy a month and 4.83 hours of occupational therapy a month. So practically, a physiotherapist would see, using this contract, about four clients a month on a monthly basis, which, for anyone who's ever had, ever had any experience of physiotherapy or occupational therapy, they would, you would understand and you would know that that's not an evidence-based amount, that is not a practical amount when you have something like 50, 60 children on our caseload. So we're having to supplement this contract with using parents who have their, who have any extended healthcare benefits. We will sort of stretch the service to include that, but we also will apply to using, if a child has autism funding, we will use some funding through that to supplement this contract. But the main element is that it's just not practical to implement. The way the contract is supposed to be implemented is that we're supposed to have a physiotherapist on staff, but anyone knows that you couldn't possibly live in Revelstoke and have a living on 4.8 hours a month as a, as a job. It's just not possible. And even though we do have a high number of children with lots of needs here, it wouldn't be sustainable to also then work privately as a specialist pediatric therapist. It's just not possible. So we bring in our physios and our occupational therapists from Salmon Arm and Venn, which again adds a strain to the contract because then we're having to pay for travel. So I, in, I know in the paperwork, I put in sort of comparison figures and I've looked at other services in other areas of the province. Everyone, no matter what, how you compare the data, whether it's looking at census data of the number of children from zero to 18, or whether it's looking at health data from the population or population growth, no matter what it comes out as, is that physios, that Revelstoke is severely underserved. And so I'm here to try and appeal to the, that your capabilities as council members, but also as people of the community, understanding what parents are potentially going through here. We have families with children with very complex needs who need regular, weekly therapy services to support their development, and it's just not happening. And these parents are having to pay out of pocket for services, which again, is not appropriate. They're having to miss, sometimes go to Vancouver to get different things. Colona, that adds in an awful lot of other complications for families, you know, funding of finances. If you don't have regular services, your child doesn't develop in the same way as perhaps it could. There's other elements to consider in terms of like, if you're not getting the right amount of therapy, then you're not necessarily developing, which then puts another strain on you as a caregiver if you haven't got the right equipment to support your child to develop. There's just so many human elements that it comes down to. And in the work that I do as the infant development consultant, I see this every single day. And it's causing such amount of distress and frustration and disappointment, I think, sometimes directed towards us in what we can provide, but also directed towards the healthcare system. And so, yeah, I could say a lot more, but I feel like perhaps if you have any specific questions, I'd be open to answering any.
Councillor Chair.
Thanks, Mrs. Oles. I should do the chair. Can you tell us about the comparables? I know that you have them in the report, but I think this is very, really shows the example of how far we are behind compared to the communities.
So I'm not a statistician, so I found this a real struggle. And what, when, and I, so I should caveat with what I've found is that the census data versus healthcare data is very different in terms of population size. The other thing is birth rates is very confusing because, for instance, a Revelstoke birth rate seems very, very high when you look at the figures, but then you compare it to Salmon Arm and it doesn't seem as high, but you compare it to Colona. And so the statistics are very far behind the actuals in, in terms of what we've noticed. But when I got someone who's better with figures at me to compare, to be equivocable with Salmon Arm and their therapy services, we should be getting about 104 hours per month of physiotherapy compared to our 4.8. And for occupational therapy, it is significant, you know, but they did just get an increase in their contract. So it will be 38.4 hours per month of physiotherapy. And then Golden, they, this was a very tricky one because the way, again, the contracts have been made, it's historical, there's lots of differences. The MCFD doesn't, who provide the contract, again, don't seem to pay attention to any of this data anyway, but here it is. Golden has a would-be equivalent to 32 hours of occupational therapy per month and 22 hours worth of physiotherapy. So compared to our four, we won't forget. In terms of the other areas, it's difficult to compare because, for instance, Vernon, Colona, Camlif, they have multiple different contracts because they're large centers. But we went for small, when we were trying to compare, we went for small ones that were close by because again, they're almost a little bit more remote and have similar issues in terms of finding staff who are appropriate to be able to provide the service. Because we could get a physiotherapist in town here to do it, but they don't have the wealth and depth of pediatric experience that the people outside of the town have.
Thanks.
So Emma, when, when we think about the comparison, now you may not be able to tell me this because of privacy, but number of patients here in Revelstoke compared to what they may have in Salmon Arm is, is inequitable? Do we have the same potential number of patients as they have down there?
So the therapist who provides the early intervention service in Salmon Arm is also who we are subcontracting here in Revelstoke. For many various reasons, but in terms of the number of patients or number of clients, she has about 80 on her caseload in Salmon Arm. This will vary month to month. And we have right now something like 46.
Okay.
So we have about half, but again, with the amount of time, she has something like 22 hours per week to see her client list and four hours per month here.
Who allocates the time? I mean, it's an incredibly low number, but second I've ever liked, 4.8 hours. Who, who brainstormed that come?
That's a very good question. So it's, the way the contract is set is it's per, it's hours per year. So it's 58 hours a year and then I've subdivided it. Because for me to be able to bring a therapist into town, I need to roughly do it on a monthly basis. Otherwise, there's quite frankly, no point of having them here. So that's why it's 4.8 per month. But if you were to, you could change those figures around and it's a total of 58 per year. That also, just to give you a bit of historical context, when I was looking back through the previous contracts, this hasn't changed since 2019. I couldn't get any further contracts back from that. There might be more. So this number of hours hasn't changed for six years now. But also our population, when you look at the population change, we've had something like a 9.4% population growth since 2021. So you would sort of expect if the Ministry of Children and Families were following that sort of data, they would have put in some kind of generic increase that would relate to a population size, but it hasn't changed. The number of hours has stayed the same.
Yeah, okay. And so councillor Lucio on the screen has his hand up. So I'm going to go to him, but then I'll have a couple more questions after. Councillor Lucio.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Oles. Uh, yeah, question through to Ms. Gibson. Do you know how the demographics have changed in our community as well as looking at the demographics of the communities you have gotten comparable data to? To see kind of like how that small or like how the young families have grown in our community compared to the other communities?
So I, again, have to caveat with the census data varies from the health data. I'm assuming because the, there's a slightly different way that they're recording. But in terms of population size, we have something that's predicted from the 2016 census. This is the, the most I could get. In 2025, we have 7.9%, 17.9% of our population is zero to 18. Golden is 15.8% and Salmon Arm is 15.6. So we do have a higher predicted percentage of a young population of zero to 18. It doesn't, I couldn't subdivide it to zero to six. It wasn't possible to do.
Uh, that's totally fair. Thank you for that. Yeah, so I think it would be great if us as council can help advocate for just a little bit more equitable division of these hours and funding. And then a question, when you're bringing in a physiotherapist, I'm assuming that the hours that they have put aside for that cover their wages. So are you guys personally covering travel costs? Or is that reducing the amount of hours that the physiotherapist is offering in our community?
Uh, so we are paying for travel costs. We have to, to make it fair for the therapist. We cover that through the early intervention, but by being creative in the way that we offer the service, so by providing this service that we do and using extended medical benefits to cover, that has helped even out the funding a little bit more to be able to offer it year-round. Because previously, in previous years, when we haven't used extended medical benefits, we've had to cut down the service. So it's only been offered six months of the year due to the demand.
Thank you very much for that.
Yeah, councillor Sturges. Yeah, and I just wanted, if I can just quickly add, I do believe that one of the challenges that you're facing is with the traveling therapist coming from Vernon, would it be, or Salmon Arm?
Right.
From, from both. The impact that the road closures is having on those appointments. You know, parents will have, you know, they'll put this appointment way in advance.
Yeah.
All of a sudden, the roads closed. Everything needs to be rescheduled and of course, it's not immediate. It'll be, you know, the next time that they're available to make it out there on their schedule, which is, you know, another eight weeks. So that's significantly impacting the ability to have that continuous level of care and that progression that we're hopefully seeing with the patients.
Yeah.
So Emma, when we, when we think about how we can help you, if we're advocating to provincial levels, should we be going to our health foundation first? Our interior health? Should we be going directly to Minister of Health? What's going to actually work so that we can have the services? So when I think about, you know, council, we were just down at UBCM. We spoke with the Ministry of Health and Interior Health about seniors on the other end of the scale. But we, you know, we, we look at the demographic here. So when I came here 40 plus years ago, demographic was around 60. It's now in the mid-30s, 35, 36. You look at that and quite a change. And, and they're building families. People come here because they like the activities and they want to build their family. So we're seeing all of that, we're seeing that even through our schooling. But how can we advocate on your behalf for our community so that we have the services we need for our children?
So from my historical understanding, the way that these contracts were previously implemented was really dependent on how they were grandfathered in, how well the person at the time advocated for their community and how other services had either taken a step back, for instance, interior health, or had decided to take on these contracts. So it's a, it's a difficult one to understand how, and it, because this contract specifically comes through the Ministry of Child and Family Development.
Okay.
So that, that minister would be the person who sits above all these contracts that are disseminated out to the community and it's community-funded. It's not, it's provincial through and then it goes through to certain area managers and then the area managers disseminate to their communities these specific contracts.
Okay, so, so our local manager would be the one that would be the person that would be going to the ministry to say, hey, we need more funding. And because that person may be a staff member, might hit us home.
Potentially. I mean, we have advocated, so the previous year's negotiation, the contracts are yearly and the previous year's negotiations with the Ministry of Children and Families, so that the contract holders, we spoke to the area manager and I raised all these points. I didn't quite have the data to back it up, but I raised the points of the human cost that we're currently seeing, the fact that the contract hasn't changed in multiple years, that our community is changing, that we aren't comparable, although I didn't have the statistics at the time to show the comparison, and actually tried to put together a proposal to explain why we need more and how much more we needed, to quantify it. And we were told, there's no more money. There's no more money. There's nothing more that we can do. So, and that actually ended us, that actually meant that we then ended the service in December and didn't have anyone right through to April because we delivered the contract as they had requested, which is, you know, not having any therapy for four months of the year can be totally devastating to a family. So it's not necessarily the area manager who has the ability to control that budget. It would be, it would be potentially the minister to advocate, the minister themselves to advocate to. Because from my understanding, there's some back thinking in sort of back rooms that they do need to look at the way that these contracts are delivered and they do need to find a more equitable way of delivering it, but there's been no implementation or strategy planning of how they might do that. So raising it to the minister directly would hopefully maybe facilitate those backroom discussions or, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sturges.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if, uh, not quite sure of how to best progress, but I think, you know, possibly looking at a recommendation from the committee of the whole to council that we put it on our agenda for discussion for UBCM next year. How can we have these, that meeting with that ministry and advocate on this behalf?
Well, let's work through that process. I'm not opposed to doing that. But we want to, in the interim, we want to do a little quicker. Regular meetings with Interior Health monthly. Let me discuss it with them as to how they think we should approach it. But also I, I will meet with the, the local people as well within the ministry and see where we can go. But we'll put out a request to discuss with the minister and, and go from there. And then council will discuss. So we don't make decisions when people present to us. We don't make decisions at this time. But we'll discuss amongst ourselves how to move forward and what we think will be the most equitable way to support our community and advocating in this way. Councillor Palmer and then councillor Lam.
Thank you, Mayor Oles. Thank you, Emma, for that. I, I am surprised Revelstoke's kind of known to have good healthcare relative to the rest of the province in general and in other areas. Everything is said here, that's great. And I think your approach, Mayor Oles, especially if you have those contacts, that's good. The, it, the other part, it's a little bit surprising to me that there isn't specific metrics on how they actually make this decision. And I think that's a piece of information we need to know. This doesn't make sense that your, every little place is going into negotiations. That there should be some fairer metrics. And so I think we would need to under-stab that for, for moving ahead. But thank you very much for the presentation on, you know, I think you've got the sympathies from us here in general, at local government, when it comes to provincial policy stuff. It's, it's a long haul on the lobbying side, so they don't expect miracles overnight.
Councillor Lam.
Oh yeah, thank you, Mayor Oles, through the chair. Thank you very much for, for the presentation today. I wanted to ask about the speech language pathologist. I know that IH has been advertising that for a while. It's part-time position. Is that resource adequate? Once it is filled, is there anything we can do to assist in filling it? I wasn't sure when you were talking about those hours, if that was for that particular role or something else. So yeah, just seeking to, wondering if we can add that on to the discussion about that position.
Sure. So, um, yes, interior health, and this is where I get, also get a little confused because in other communities, speech and language therapy doesn't necessarily sit under interior health. It also sits under this early intervention contract. But in this community, for whatever reason, I, I don't, I don't know the historics of it, but speech and language therapy, yes, sits through interior health. They have not filled that position. My understanding from the community is that one of the reasons why they haven't filled the position is because it is a part-time position and so it's very difficult for someone who would move to town to fulfill that and be able to live here. We all know why that is, because of the expenses, et cetera. So they haven't managed to fill the position. What they are currently doing in the meantime is they are subcontracting out to the BC, BC Centre, the BC Child Centre of Ability, who are providing a pediatric outreach team for other communities in the province. And they're coming quarterly. So they come for a week, they're coming quarterly. They came in September, they'll be coming again in December, which isn't enough. But it is better than nothing that we had while that position isn't filled. Once it is filled, I think that there's a significant need for that. But I do think that the caseload that the speech and language pathologist was carrying was comfortably met from my understanding. But I definitely couldn't say that I was in it.
Thank you so much.
Just to follow up on the speech and language pathologist, is that not a service that's offered currently through the elementary school systems?
So once, so there's a split in, in, in funding. Once you are six years old or into the school system, then the school system will take that on. So they take on the, the funding for speech and language pathology, occupational therapy and.
So from zero to six, is really not any access through this government program when it's built? Is that correct?
Yes.
And just an anecdotal comment, councillor, thank you, is, you know, in the past, from talking to people who work in that field, it's, it's a, it's also not just an hours issue, but a pay issue. There's lots of positions available for trained people and some of them pay more than others. So the equity in that sense is a part of it.
So from my understanding, when we're in interior health, with the government, get less money than in the private sector sort of thing.
Anecdotally, that's what I've heard. Yeah, yeah, from people who work in that field. I was just wondering why it was open for so long and asked somebody who I knew and that was.
Okay, that is understood.
Yeah.
Anything else we should know?
I don't think so. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak. I think in terms of recognition, I recognize it. Other people in the community recognize it. The therapists that we work with recognize it. I would say actually that the BC Centre for Ability Pediatric Outreach Team, when they came, I was talking to them about this and about connecting with them, about the speech and language therapy that they're providing. They also recognize it and they would like to support our advocacy for this. I've also contacted the provincial advocate for early intervention services and she would like to advocate and we're looking to become a member to try and have some greater bargaining power. But for the minute, and especially I think the political circumstances mean that I don't have much hope that things will change. But on the other hand, what we are currently providing is, yeah, just not enough.
Well, I think, you know, having watched, I think most of us have experienced watching families grow up and those who need the service, we may not understand that unless we're in that relationship with that family in whatever capacity. And then once we are, we understand what we're missing. And so I appreciate the fact that you're coming to us to bring it to our attention so that we can, we can do what we can to help. Because from this council's perspective, keeping our community healthy and holistic in, in a massive way is really the intention. So whatever we can do to help, we don't have, as a city, deep pockets to be able to say, well, we can help with this because then again, it's all on the taxpayer. So we need to advocate. We'll figure out a way. But as long as we have your contact information and then our assistant can be in contact. And, but in the meantime, I kind of know where we're going in the next one. Any other comments from council? Thank you again, Emma. You did well.
That was very well.
Stepping out of your comfort zone to, we appreciate that so much.
Thank you very much for taking your time. Thank you.
All right, council, we are going to move on to exciting things. I hear somebody left. Please in charge this bylaw update. And so Ms. Moore, this is on you, I'm assuming, to lead us through where we need to go.
Thank you through the chair. So in relation with corporate services and Miss Floyd, we have prepared proposed draft schedules for the fees and charges by law update. Right now, the current financial plan includes a 3% increase. However, council could opt to go up to the 85% increase in fees and services to reduce the tax implication. This would increase revenue by approximately $50,000 and it would have a tax reduction of approximately 29%.
Okay, so reading through all of the documents with the track changes, thanks so much for that. I'm an advocate of us going 5%. Council can, can weigh in. There was one, because I'm a little more familiar with the cemetery stuff. And so if I can just draw our attention to that one, if you. Um, and so if I can just draw our attention to that one, if you don't mind, I think it's him. Um, I, I just wanted to, the snow removal budget from December first to, I think it's February twenty-eighth. Um, it's either L or M, is, is going up just a, a bit. It never covers what we need. Uh, cause I think Mr. Black, uh, it costs so much for equipment and he's got these shiny new snow blowers and that sort of thing and we need to pay for them. But I looked at it and go, I think we're at four hundred and some dollars per occurrence. If we can boost that to a flat fee of a minimum of five hundred bucks, we never recoup that money. Uh, but it's not an unusual amount to do that because when we do have to, if, if we do have to go into the cemetery for, uh, we're, we're usually digging through two to three feet of snow. And it's going to take the better part of a day for our equipment to go through. So we're not even recouping that amount of money. So any comment, Mr. Black or Ms. Moore on that? The appropriate comment is no comment. Counselor Palmer, comment?
Uh, on, on the whole general.
On the general.
Yeah. Um, so we talked a little bit about this yesterday in the finance committee meeting as well. And thank you to staff for the, the list. Um, uh, time and cheap, I'm gonna say that, like, I'm looking forward to going through each one individually.
Okay, well, that's fine. We're, we're leaving here shortly, so you have any?
Yeah. Um, the, uh, and that's really the purpose of that sort of cheeky statement is to, uh, there, there's a lot of stuff in here. And so on the global, uh, on the global end, I concur with you, Mayor Solz, that going for the five percent for the reasons we discussed in the finance committee yesterday, essentially on how we're trying to balance that in the philosophy for i- in general is, uh, how, what's, what's the contribution, user pay contribution? And uh, in, in general, uh, these are all, for the most part, subsidized by taxation. Um, and, uh, and so we don't want to go to the actual cost of things like for families to go swimming because they'll have to take on a mortgage to go for a swim if they're. Those kind of things. Um, the, uh, there is some I went through and there's, there is the odd one that I wonder about being high. In general, I think they're, they, they are too low. And so the five percent is reasonable. And I guess one question I have through to development services, uh, assuming that they've looked in general, uh, it feels to me that, um, that generally our fees are not covering the actual cost. Cause we can't profit on these, we can't profit on these items. So I just, I need some sort of affirming statements that we aren't going beyond the, uh, your real costs.
Good. Through your worship, Counselor Palmer. Just to clarify that I'm understanding, are you worried that the fees are too low and not cost recovery or that they're getting to the point that they're too high and they're beyond cost recovery?
What, uh, through the, yeah. It, 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 so I, my, my sense is, my intuitive sense is there's still, we've made some pretty big jumps on some of them. There's some really big jumps. And uh, you know, then the question is, you know, before, where we sell subsidizing for profit entities by, you know, with the taxpayer on, on big things or smaller things like somebody's building a house, uh, those kind of things. It feels to me when I imagine the amount of work, including the time we spend here reviewing files, variances and kinds of things. It really does, isn't, we have lots of room before it's too, too much as far as, um, the, the city creating a profit as such.
Uh, through your worship, Counselor Palmer, I would agree that historically they have been too low to be anywhere close to cost recovery. The challenge that we have is there's such a divergence of applications. We might get a development permit, for instance, that is still a major D P that goes to council. That takes one-third the amount of staff time. Then a more complicated development permit for a multi-phase application. And also too, for the more complicated ones, we're kind of more senior staff that are being paid more on them. So we do feel that we've hit the mark on where we're at and that every year, as long as we're keeping up with that inflationary increase, that we are uh, relatively cost recovery and we look at it as a whole. And it is relatively approximate if we base it on the number of hours that it takes on average for some of these applications. We've had our staff track their time and made sure that it is reflective in the cost. And then we're also trying to be mindful of what the costs are in other comparable municipalities where we are probably a bit on the higher end. But in speaking with those municipalities, they know that their fees are very, very low and comparable to where we were three or four years ago. Um, so I would say that we've hit the, the right mark for the time being, but every year we need to continually reevaluate to make sure that we're, we're not falling too far behind again.
So, so Mayor Solz, the point behind that then is like if we're at, if we're at cost recovery and inflationary increases are you know, three percent.
Right.
Then are we tilting over? That's, that, that, I, I don't think we are there. I did see those other anomalies, so especially even public permits and things like that. Uh, it, it's, it's, I guess that's the kind of thing that I see, you know, that's a review process, you know. Uh, can we get this to a fairer place or not and without creating a bunch of bureaucracy. But uh, so that'd be my only caveat is perhaps the, uh, it's in the planning department predominantly, maybe a little bit in engineering as well. Uh, that we aren't tilting over if we're going to the five percent. The other areas I, I, I see no problem at all.
Good, good. Ms. Moore.
Um, to the chair, I do want to kind of make note that, um, I don't think this additional two percent variance between the three and five percent will tilt the city of being over cost recovery. Um, although many of our expenditures are going up by inflation set at around two percent, there are anomalies in the core budget like software support and, um, vehicle applicant charges that are going up at a higher inflation rate. In addition, um, you do have to consider all of the overhead that goes into a department, um, to administer essentially development services for the city. So it's not just the development services staff, it's everyone else that touches that file. Right? So, um, it's a little bit hard to quantify on this one, but I would uh, suggest that there isn't a high risk between three and five percent in terms of not maintaining cost recovery.
That's wonderful. To, to that, so we're introducing the, uh, or I have already introduced the administrative overhead charges, but that's not happening with this long list. So even, even in that, there's that three percent plus, the overhead aside from, aside from the department, the department, they're, they're tracking your hours. But there is other administrative things, billing and all that kind of stuff. So there is lots of, yeah, in that sense, there probably is lots of room. Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good point. And, and just as Ms. Moore said, that there's many hands that touch your pile, not just one department.
Yeah.
And so that five percent still keeps us within that, that range. We're not going over. But also we have to be fair in our costs. So when I look at our costs and, and, uh, well, I think for the most part, they're pretty decent. Counselor Lucio, you have your hand up for a while. Go ahead, please.
Uh, thanks, Mayor Solz. Uh, yeah, I would have to agree that, um, I understand the want to go to the five percent. Uh, my concern is, um, I think we're looking in E for Parks and Rec. When it comes to the five percent increase for renting the space plus five percent to rent the tables plus five percent to use the plates, it's just compounding. And that is essentially getting downloaded onto any organization that wants to use the space, which, uh, I have heard that is making it more and more challenging to justify using the multipurpose rooms to be able to host events. Um, as well as when it comes to, um, either youth sports or access to the pool. Um, as much as we're looking for a reduction on our tax base, these are all just little charges that are getting downloaded on the members of our community. Um, so as much as I am in, uh, support of five percent mostly across the board, I don't know if I'm supportive of, of five percent specifically when, within the parks and recs, uh, fees and charges.
So, uh, Counselor Lucio, just a question from my perspective. Um, when your group utilizes that facility, do you see a change? Is there a loss in product? Um, you know, plates being broken, things go missing, that sort of thing. Um, to kind of justify that bit of cost charge. And I'll go to Mr. Natta in a moment, but I just wondered from your perspective, do you see changes in that?
Um, when it comes to using the space, um, they do have a very extensive inventory list, um, that you request everything to be pulled out before your event. Um, and then they go back and make sure that everything, um, is returned. And I know that there are charges if things, um, disappear outside of the kitchen. Um, so I'm not exactly sure what those, uh, costs and charges are to the organization that's renting it. Um, but yeah, it's just making it harder because then it's that, you know, consideration of if we, you know, want to have coffee because, uh, coffee earns a certain price on top of that, plus renting the cups. So it's just, like I said, all these things just kind of pile up on top of each other and can make things hosted by nonprofits, uh, a little bit more challenging for them to justify.
Okay, thanks to that comment. Uh, Mr. Natta, do you have any comments on the things in your department when we're talking about, uh, use of the facility at the recreation scene?
Uh, thank you, your worship. I don't have any comments in particular. If there's any questions that I can answer, I'd be happy to do so.
Um, so, so my question about, about when people are booking things, uh, do people question what the costs are and how we achieve them?
No, they do not question how we achieve the cost. They do ask for quotes before they book the space. So we do provide quotes for any type of large booking or upon any request.
And, and when people ask for quotes, are we, are we losing out to other facilities, uh, because of our costs?
Not that I'm aware of. I haven't had any of that feedback from my clerk saying that, uh, groups have decided to go elsewhere because of the costs. I know sometimes there is some discussion at the front desk about the cost because we're such a small cost of the event. I mean, they pay for caterers, they pay for food, they pay for alcohol. Those are all really large costs. And I think event organizers struggle with the entire cost of hosting an event.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Palmer?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Solz. Um, yeah, interesting conversation. This sort of, uh, highlights the need of, uh, sort of a deeper dive. Uh, so I did look at the recreation stuff too, and there's some questions come up and I can't remember. There's so many lists here.
Sure.
Uh, but you asked the question, why are people going elsewhere? Uh, but there's an other side of that equation. Equation is to, to some people, are some businesses losing out to corporations, quite frankly, that choose to use our facility subsidized by the taxpayers uh, for their own corporate interests. So I, I believe there's multinational, uh, corporation that's doing training in our facilities right now, probably because it's cheap. And, um, and so that, so that's the other side of the equation to Counselor Lucio, which I, you know, definitely hearing that, uh, um, so, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to stay at this sort of high global, uh, level. I do have a couple other small comments.
Sure.
Now, yeah, so I, just sort of on that same theme. Okay, well, what's fair? So I'll, I'll just pick on a, an example here, impounding dangerous dogs. First impoundment sixty-two dollars, second impoundment a hundred and twenty-five dollars. I, I, I'm pretty sure bylaws were not coming anywhere close to the real labor costs, let alone all the other stuff. Uh, 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 for, for those, you know, dangerous dog kind of situations. So to me, that just looks like there probably should be tenfold at, at, at least. Uh, the other one that, um, I flagged was on, uh, transit services. Uh, that's not being adjusted because of contractual reasons, but you know, it's the two dollars, uh, two dollars per trip, dollar seventy-five per you.
Thank you. I like discounts. I've reached them. I, I expect them.
Yeah. Yeah. So you get to save twenty-five cents.
Yeah.
And, and, and we've had a little bit of discussion, but to me, those are, those are real revenues and we just, you know, we're a little bit surprised that we're having to subsidize transit services more. Uh, that caught us off guard. And so it, it, I personally, I'm in favor of, you know, residents having no charge. But those that are here spending big dollars playing, well, two dollars, I don't know if you can find anywhere else in the world that's that cheap for, uh, uh, a transit. So th- those are some of the other questions that are on that, that bigger global, uh, side. I, I, I get, we, we, I think we have this conversation just about every year. And I'm sort of wondering if at some point we might want to contemplate a that sort of a subcommittee, uh, whatever, uh, that's a combination of staff and maybe a couple politicians that, uh, should go line by line and do this sort of logic test and make recommendations on a, a more holistic thing. I know staff's done a great job on trying to do it, but there's just so many things here.
Yeah, and I'm always in awe of the staff being able to come up with this sort of stuff. Counselor Stewart, first?
Yeah, I think, um, I think maybe from a different lens, I'm looking at the, uh, Schedule D, um, the fire response. We're all well aware of the cost associated with, uh, with, with the fire department and the staffing levels and the challenges that we have in, in, uh, in meeting those. And I'm looking at, uh, you know, the first false fire alarm, um, we're increasing it from, it was like, uh, currently nothing to a hundred and five dollars, which I'm all in favor of. I would actually, um, I think that's fine for the first. I think the second, third, you know, maybe the first and second are, are fine. I think, uh, third and fourth should be almost a cost recovery. Um, viewpoint based on the fact that, uh, you're continuing to present a hazard and I mean, having been on multiple false alarms in my career in the fire service, it's not as simple as showing up. There's, you know, there's the manpower, there's the laying out, there's, you know, hooking up the hydrants if you're doing it all, you know, per the textbook. Um, you know, it's a, it's a timely and costly thing. And I think we should be looking at these items as a cost recovery. Especially when you're looking at somebody who's creating offenses such as the third and fourth offense. I don't think, uh, I don't think the taxpayer should be subsidizing that in any way, shape or form. And then the other one would be the hotel public and, uh, hotel and public billing, fire safety and inspection fees. I think it's, uh, in my opinion, I think, uh, I'm supportive of five percent. I think five percent would probably be a little bit light, to be honest.
Okay, okay. Counselor Allen.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Solz. Um, I'm going to be supportive of a five percent increase. And my rationale is that generally speaking, uh, the fees and charges are a user pay, uh, model. Um, and that, um, um, if, if not, it's going to be, uh, shifted over to some form of general taxation. Um, we're still going through our budget process and got months ago before we finalize it, but my sense is um, the overall, uh, tax increase is probably going to be closer to five than it is to three. So, um, by, by, if we increase one more than the other, that's going to shift some of the, the sort of generalized, non-itemized, uh, individual fees and services over. So that for, for the purpose of this discussion today, that's fine. I also, um, agree with, uh, Counselor Palmer, um, that maybe at one point we could go through a rationalization process, uh, to review the whole thing with maybe a subcommittee or a subgroup to listen to staff, your feedback and that kind of stuff. I don't know if I would put that forward today just, uh, cause it's not necessarily my priority, but I would support that if somebody else wants to support that. Um, yeah, and then, um, I realized, uh, just listening to the council members about, you know, some of the fees become, uh, challenging. I know what the city has done over the years is tried to, um, especially for nonprofit groups or, or, or people seeking, seeking equity, uh, uh, for, you know, services like using the pool for kids or transit, that kind of stuff. We partner with community groups, uh, so, and we also have grant and aid, um, program to waive those fees for those kinds of things. So um, uh, they don't account for everything, of course, but, um, I, I would, uh, generally support putting effort in that direction to, you know, set the cost. And then if, if people are in need, we can find options for, for those in a case like this.
Okay, good. Counselor Jerry?
Thanks, Mayor Solz. Uh, there's a number of stuff here. I, I do see some that have gone up, uh, thirty, thirty-three percent going through the numbers. Um, I'd be happy to do a deep dive in these with any other counselors who want to form a subcommittee. Um, also happy to start with a five percent increase with a review. Um, also happy to start with a five percent increase with a review. If that's uh an option here.
Well, I think at this point, if we can, if we can nail down a percentage so that this work and move things forward, that would be great. And not opposed to doing uh the subcommittee. Uh, my question will be, where plans, staff, be able to sit with us to help us go through that sort of thing? Might be uh, it might be giving you too much work to do. So go ahead and weigh in.
Um, through the chair, I would uh suggest that perhaps the finance committee would be a reasonable committee to go through fees and charges. Um, so creating.
Counselor.
Yeah, just so so we stay at that sort of global level first. Um, I'm prepared for somebody else to put the motion on the table. Um, uh, I'll just do it, Mayor Solz, and maybe some help from staff. So I'm gonna tweak a little bit what's here, uh, that the twenty twenty-six fees and charges amendment bylaw be developed for council consideration based on a five percent increase.
Does that work for you, Ms. Morris, hard as word goes?
What you mean?
Okay, so seconded for that motion. Counselor, that one, discussion, you want us?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to it because I'm just, uh, based on what Counselor Lucio said regarding recreation fees, that probably is the only area of concern in that. And there's a part of me that wants, is thinking, well, maybe we should review uh that separately. So that might be, and this, this is for consideration, so it's not set in stone. Uh, so I'm just trying to mitigate, you know, that that full debate here right now, but very cognizant of Counselor Lucio's concerns uh moving ahead. Um, and but this provides, I think, you know, clear, clear direction for staff for preparing that bylaw and an understanding. And I guess the other sort of, without a resolution, just requesting that um uh development services and engineering, I think, uh, just do a quick um scan to make sure we're not uh blatantly overgoing or cheating the the amounts there. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any other uh discussion on the five percent to motion on the table? So now call a question, calls in favor? Opposed, motions carried unanimously, thank you. Moving on, uh, Ms. Moore, to utility rates amendment by law two four two five. Uh, brief overview, we're doing uh some inflationary increases and then five percent or four percent, depending on what our asset tag is, is that correct?
Um, through the chair, correct. So um, before you is tracking schedules for specifically the utilities fees and charges, which is water, sewer, biggie water and refuse services. Um, in historical plans, they were increasing at an annual rate of five percent um and plan for twenty twenty-six. However, for water, biggie water and sewer rates, um, the annual increase has decreased to four percent. And for garbage and composting, refuse services, um, it has increased to six percent this year um due to the new program at the end of twenty twenty-six. Um, and further increases may be imposed in twenty twenty-seven as well, once we do uh further analysis on those costs. The reason why the percentage has decreased for water and sewer rates um is that inflationary increases at a two percent at the moment. Um, we've seen high growth in new connections, and so we're able to rely on one percent growth per year um for the foreseeable future. And um, the other piece is the implementation of water metering. Um, will help defer some of the capital infrastructure projects later into the plan, so we don't have to save at um as rapid of a pace.
Uh, comments from council? Go ahead, Counselor.
Uh, just a question, standing back to that administrative overhead, this doesn't reflect the that uh that new policy on administrative overhead, or is it already integrated in the uh water and sewer fees?
Through the chair, so um water and sewer fees already paid at administrative overhead, and now it's just formalized through that policy.
Okay, thank you.
So any other questions? Are you comfortable with what's been presented to us? And does someone want to make a motion? Counselor.
Yeah, sorry.
There's a specific, is it so?
Through the chair, sorry, there isn't a specific motion for this one. We typically bring it back um forward through the uh the special committee of the whole in November as part of the entire long-term financial plan. And then um, we create a motion then to come forward with the bylaw.
I will make a motion that we do exactly.
But if if you'd like, we can make a motion today to direct staff to come back.
I I I'd like to make the motion today because again, it's not in stone, but then it gets some better guidance. So and that's based on the staff recommendation of the proposed uh twenty twenty-six increases in your uh chart here. So I'll I'll move that the water uh user rates, sewer user rates and garbage and compost user rates uh be prepared based for the twenty twenty-six fiscal year based on the report.
You'll second that, Counselor.
Sure.
All right. Uh, any further discussion on that? So you got a lot of favor. Motion's carried unanimously. All right, we're gonna move on to short-term rental project draft policy scenarios. Okay, Mr. Uh Simon, is this uh, you're gonna give us a scenario that's all encompassing in five words or less?
Your worship.
Um. That we're all with that, thanks.
Happy to keep it short. Uh, if council would like a presentation, we have one. If not, we are happy to unpack some some of the questions that you made.
You want to read?
I'd like a presentation.
I think we need a presentation, especially for the public. Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being prepared for that, Mr. Simon.
Um, thank you, council. So today we are going to be giving you guys an update on the short-term rental project and hopefully getting some feedback, uh, the very least through some discussion today. So a little bit of an overview of what we're going to be presenting to you, some background just to refresh your memory on the project. And for anyone who may be listening online, get into some of the finer points of the discussion. And then lastly, conclude with uh hopefully some robust feedback from committee of the whole today so that staff have some marching orders to continue forward on this project. Starting off with some of the background, just looking at our current short-term rental framework. So council is aware that in April twenty twenty-two, that was the last time we adopted bylaws amending our zoning bylaw, our municipal ticketing information bylaw, as well as our business licensing bylaw. Then that we clarified in general, you know, what short-term rental use was. We used to have eight or nine different uses that all describe short-term rental, got all wrapped up under one use to try and simplify the bylaw. We expanded some short-term rental allowances, so we allowed whole home STRs within single detached homes in the downtown, as well as Victoria Road commercial corridor area. We expanded short-term rental allowances when there is a permanent resident onsite operator to the downtown fringe area, so the MU two zone, as well as fifty-nine properties that are located along Hay Road. So you can see not anything huge, but some minor uh increases to short-term rental allowances throughout the city. These changes built upon some of the historic approvals that have been granted. Generally, the city's approach had been to adopt short-term rental allowances through zoning. So comprehensive development zones, we have several where short-term rental is a permitted use, as well as spot zones. And since we did the new zoning bylaw, we wrapped all those spot zones, all those R one Vs, R two Vs, R four Vs. We put them all into one new zone called the RLD six zone. So it makes it a little bit more clear. In twenty twenty-five, we kicked off a review of the short-term rental regulations, initiated a a public information meeting in February of this year. We had a survey that was open for approximately two months, concluding March thirty-first. Came back to council in April and presented the findings of that survey and the public information meeting, as well as got counsel to endorse a project goal. You guys gave us some great feedback in April, came back in May, got that solidified. And then since then, we've been continuing research, targeted stakeholder engagement. So we've had four sessions with the Advisory Planning Commission. We've worked with Tourism Revelstoke, uh, we're going there for a second session shortly, or sorry, a third session shortly, and then our first session with the chamber, we're hoping for the end of October. So some statistics that are important to kind of round out this discussion of short-term rental, because it does get a little bit convoluted when you start talking about different zones and short-term rental versus bed and breakfast and tourist accommodation and all these things that kind of float around. So to kind of start, we got just under four thousand dwelling units in the city. Uh, about seventy-five percent of those are single detached dwellings. Just kind of give you a little bit of the lay of the land. Excluding our comprehensive development zones, about a hundred and sixty-three dwelling units in the city are eligible to be used as short-term rental, so just over four percent. When we include those comprehensive development zones, you see that number shoot up to almost sixteen percent. So it kind of gives council this idea that most of the allowances we have for short-term rental are in the site-specific comprehensive development zones, not our standard low-density or medium-density or high-density residential zones. We got just under two hundred licenses that are currently issued for short-term rental. Uh, this does not include bed and breakfast or hotels, so just again, speaking short-term rental specifically. When we account for condo hotels in the city, this equates to about eleven point two percent of all dwellings in the city being used as short-term rental right now, lawfully. When we exclude those comprehensive development zones, we're at thirty-six licenses. And so if you look at how many licenses licenses we have issued in standard low-density areas, you're in that vicinity of about one percent being used right now legally for short-term rental. So we got some maps that our GIS group has done up that were very helpful, just helping kind of visualize it. So this first map, I'll just scroll through it really slowly. But you can see as we go from the north end of the city to the south, these are all the properties in green that are eligible to be used for short-term rental right now. So nothing in Columbia Park, nothing in the Big Eddy, nothing along West Side Road or Highway twenty-three North. Again, there's some commercial development in Columbia Park that allows for tourist accommodation, but no short-term rental in standard dwelling units. Uh, along the highway, a lot of allowances for short-term rental. Mostly, we're seeing hotels and some long-term accommodation that's constructed out there. Uh, recently, Base Camp got occupancy for seventy-five units out there that are are nearly a hundred percent occupied, and that's all long-term, so really good to see. As we zoom in a little bit, you can see all these areas in the downtown, downtown fringe, scenic corridor area that are green. These are all the properties that are developed with a single detached dwelling. So these are the ones that are eligible to potentially be used for short-term rental in accordance with existing zoning regulations. And as we continue to kind of scroll through, you'll see some spot zones throughout Southside, as well as when we get into Arrow Heights here, you'll see a lot of spot zones. And then obviously Mackenzie Village, the fifty-nine uh properties along Hay Road that are eligible to use as short-term rental. Then zooming out a little bit, obviously the big one being the resort that has short-term rental entitlements throughout their their development here. So the map below this is the same one, just overlaid with issued licenses. So it kind of gives you an idea of active versus eligible short-term rentals within the community. And as we go through, you can see it, it's pretty spread out in the community. Um, not everyone is taking advantage of operating short-term rental, even when there is eligibility for it. So I think that's kind of the key message that the the maps here are signifying. And as we get in again to Arrow Heights, you'll see how they get consolidated. There are hundreds of licenses issued in Mackenzie Village, so they're all overlapping with each other. And then as we go into the resort, you'll see as we get onto Monashie and Mackenzie, again, short-term rental licenses have been issued. So the the main purpose of this map is just to help council and the community kind of visualize active versus eligible short-term rentals. And it's important for us to know that because we have to get this right in terms of what that right balance is for this community. We are a resort community, obviously, short-term rentals are a critical component. And we also need to understand too, if we expand or restrict short-term rental ability within the city, what is the practical impact of that actually going to be?
So, Mr. Simon, can I ask, just before you carry on, Sergeant, you said we have approximately a hundred and sixty-nine uh eligible or legal, whatever that number was exactly. Do we know how many uh not legal short-term rentals that we have in the community with all the changes in the provincial uh requests, that sort of thing? Uh, over and above, there's still some I'm assuming.
Uh, yeah, through your worship, we still have several that are operating without licenses. And one of the challenges that we ascertain is, is it someone not operating in accordance with the terms and conditions of their license? Or is it someone just operating blatantly outside of zoning? Uh, Mr. Jips can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the last numbers we ran, we're just over, I think, three hundred, three hundred and fifty uh listings we're seeing. Um, now, keep in mind, you start unpacking these numbers and you can go down so many different rabbit holes because you might have multiple listings for one property across various platforms. But then in the data that we get from the province, it would just show up as blanket listings. So even when we're ranging three hundred to four hundred listings, that might only be for two hundred and fifty properties in the city that are posting multiple times. Um, our rate of compliance has definitely improved since the provincial platform has been announced. Um, we, Mr. Jips can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the resource capacity required within the bylaw enforcement group has probably gone down at least fifty percent. And we're really focusing on those those heavy hitters now that are just blatantly ignoring the zoning rules. And those are the ones where, you know, a municipal ticketing information or a bylaw fence notice ticket that they get, the five hundred dollars isn't cutting it, they're the ones that need to be brought to court to actually shut down their operation and get a court order saying quit operating. So those are the ones that the bylaw team has really been focusing on.
Good, thanks for that, very well.
Yeah, Mayor Solz, just a couple other follow-up questions. So i- if I'm reading the map correctly, Big Eddy and Columbia Park don't have any short-term rental capacity under the, whether it was permitted or aside from the policy, but there's no one that has that zoning in Columbia Park. And and Big Eddy, is that accurate?
Through your worship, that is accurate. Their only allowance would be if there's commercial properties that are tourist accommodation or low-density residential to do bed and breakfast.
Right, okay, and that was my next question is bed and breakfast. So that's not contained in this uh, this map?
No, and and we do have a map, again, there's so many layers to this and didn't want to confuse the matter, but we do have a map that does show bed and breakfast versus active versus eligible again. And what you'll see with bed and breakfast is we have about three thousand lots within the city. Um, you know, assume probably eighty percent to ninety percent of those are developed with a dwelling that are low-density residential that are eligible as bed and breakfast. And we only have about forty-five licenses issued right now. So again, even even less than than short-term rental.
And and the the importance of the that factor, again, yeah, I know it's difficult. It's not not at all, I need criticism at all of that information because if you give us everything, I'd be able to understand it. Um, the, but the bed and breakfast, there is a proposal or potential of saying, okay, they're essentially the same thing as vacation rentals from a functional perspective. Um, and then so then that becomes relevant because there would be bed and breakfast in Big Eddy and Columbia Park. And then the whole question about taking away people's rights and all that stuff. Um, yeah, okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, carry on.
And and through your worship to all of council, um, we have, we have maps that show tourist accommodation eligibility versus active licenses as well, and happy at the conclusion, if if it's beneficial, to share that with council as well.
Sure. And and Mayor Solz, I may just, that's sort of another point that in this whole discussion, and maybe it'll come up later on. But uh, so with the um four thousand-ish dwelling units, seventy-five percent uh single detached, so that's three thousand-ish uh units that with the new provincial legislation, hypothetically, it could become, you know, threefold at least of 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 that hypothetically. Uh, and then how that impacts long-term, like what's in that need, the intent behind the legislation, how that relieves the pressure of that whole question. Yeah, okay, thanks.
Sure.
Lots to consider. You don't even want to go down that rabbit hole of zoned capacity in the city right now because it's it's a lot under the new legislation.
Yeah, uh, other than Mayor Solz is, the these decisions, like one of the problems with the province and arguably even with us is these sort of s- one solution kind of ideas, then you suddenly realize, so like, for example, in Kelowna, when they did the opt-in thing, suddenly their whole tourism industry's collapsing and businesses are are screaming at the politicians, what have you done? It's probably too far, too fast. And I I think one of the things that we've been trying to do, at least for the last couple of years, is more methodical approach on how we're making changes.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
So some, before we get into kind of the meat of the discussion today, just some other background information because again, there's so many layers to this, it can get quite confusing quite quickly when we start talking different development forms that are eligible for this use or that use. Um, some important key points for council to be aware of. So right now, only single detached dwellings, so single-family homes within the downtown, downtown fringe and the Victoria Road corridor are permitted to be used as short-term rental. So any multi-unit dwellings, any mixed-use buildings within the downtown, unless- unless they are purpose built as a hotel, a classic hotel, they are not eligible to be used for tourist accommodation. And you have seen staff be very adamant about holding this line. Someone comes in, a mixed use building, and says, I want to do short term rental in here. We say, nope, that's not what it was built at, there's restrictions in the zoning that do not allow you to do that. You can apply for variances, but because, you know, we're focused on supporting long term housing in the community right now, and downtown is our most walkable area, you are unlikely to see staff support for those types of variances. And the reason why I bring that up is because this has been one of the challenges that has caused confusion within the bylaw. We have Base Camp, for example, the hotel immediately across the street that opens up that's permitted to be used as a hotel. But the minute they want to start renting out units individually, then all of a sudden they become a multi unit dwelling doing short term rental, the same as Mackenzie Village, or same as condo hotels in the resort. And it creates this really challenging regulatory environment where it is confusing for individuals. And it does also become challenging for staff to administer it because we're really thinking about what is the difference between a multi unit dwelling that's being used for short term rental and hotels, the way that they're being built now, that are almost fully self sustaining buildings where you can get remote access into the unit. It has a kitchen, it has laundry, it has everything you would need for it to be a traditional dwelling unit, but it's a hotel. And so that's one of the nuts that we're trying to crack with this project, and it's a confusing one. And it's a challenging one, so it's one of the items we wanted to flag for council today. One of the other ones that we wanted to discuss, and again, we've already went over it, but bed and breakfasts are permitted in all low density residential zones. So back in, I think it was oh eight, you know, before the city introduced amendments to allow B and B everywhere, they were just an accessory use within these residential zones. So we've already allowed some form of tourist accommodation throughout the whole community. And the only difference between short term rental and B and B is B and B is operated out of rooms in your house, where a short term rental will be operated out of a separate dwelling unit. And one of the challenges that we're seeing, and Mr. Gips can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're at four or five right now, where we're having individuals that are actually decommissioning their secondary suites so that they can now operate a bed and breakfast. Because if they wanted to operate the B and B out of their suite, that would put them into the territory of being a short term rental. So it's important to keep that in mind as we discuss some of these policy scenarios that would examine merging those two uses into one. It would solve one issue with the confusion between the two and people ripping out secondary suites. But then we are also expanding this short term rental in a dwelling unit more broadly throughout the community. And then lastly, another important note for council to be aware of that we do want some feedback today. Once the new provincial legislation was passed back in October twenty twenty three, this really changed things in terms of historic legal nonconforming uses, or the more informal term grandfathered properties. Council now has the ability to rescind historic approvals, and those properties would then be forced to be brought into compliance with the existing zoning regulations. Historically, council always had the ability to rescind any zoning approvals, but those properties would be protected as quote unquote grandfathered. They can continue operating as long as they don't cease operation of that now illegal use. That is not the case for short term rental anymore. So again, not saying go down that road or don't go down that road, just important information for council to be aware of as we start moving into the granular details of what these policy scenarios are going to entail. So getting into some of the policy scenarios, you'll see they're all kind of similar but different in their implementation. So the first one would really entail looking at the B and B and short term rental use, combining it into one to avoid some of the confusion that we're having right now and to reduce some of the inequities that we do have where STR with a resident onsite operator is permitted in some areas and not in other areas, again, trying to achieve that goal that council had endorsed to allow permanent residents to participate in this type of the, this type of sector in the economy. This scenario, one would be expanding that throughout the community, making sure that it's operated by a permanent resident, or at the very least, we could follow the Tofino model and just say you have to have at least one long term residential occupancy use on site, so i.e. someone living there is their principal residence in one dwelling unit, and then another dwelling unit could be used for short term rental. And we can talk about how you manage the scale of that. Like, one of the challenges that other jurisdictions have seen is you might have a little garden suite on the property with multiple renters in there, and then a very large single family home that's five thousand square feet that's used as short term rental, throws things off on a lot by lot basis. We could look at capping the number of bedrooms to a maximum of two, again, to reduce that scale so that there's not this far reaching impact in the community and really making it that genuine mortgage helper and giving property owners the flexibility. Do you want to rent out your your house on a short term rental basis, very minimal? Or do you want to do long term rental? But with this, we would need to exclude existing licenses and CD zones from these rules because again, a lot of those historic licenses have already been issued to allow for four bedrooms or whatever the case may be. Unless council again wanted us to rescind those licenses and require those individuals to reapply and abide by the new rules or seek variances. That is a rabbit hole that we can go down as well. I anticipate it would take some staff time. The real important thing is those CD zones, because the CD zones kind of have their own rules related to short term rental. And if we want to start clawing back some of that, that's a that's going to be a very methodical and thoughtful discussion that we need to have as a community. So going into the second scenario, very similar provisions as scenario number one, except instead of allowing it citywide, we could work to figure out what parts of the city make sense to accommodate this use. Now with this, getting to Council Palmer's earlier point, this could result in areas that have historically been allowed to do bed and breakfast, no longer being permitted to do bed and breakfast if we merged the two uses into one and restricted it spatially within the community. We would have to examine again historic approvals, council direction on whether or not you want those to remain, but any new approvals would not be permitted anywhere outside the designated zones. Something to consider. Then the last scenario, again, very similar options or regulations rather as option number one. But instead of looking at it citywide, or instead of looking at it in specific geographic areas of the city, we would be managing it on a cap system. Now, the cap system again is an imperfect solution. It does potentially create inequities for people that can actually manage to get in the in the listing in time and get in the queue, and then it also creates this administrative challenge for staff to be administering this type of cap system in the community. But it is something that we have explored and we are confident that we would be able to do it in a way that is not as resource intensive as historically we have felt it would be. The new provincial platform for enforcement would be very instrumental in this. But again, cap system is one of the other options that we've come up with. So with that, to facilitate some discussion today and to get some feedback, even if it's just feedback at the discussion level and doesn't result in a formal resolution, a formal resolution would be great, but if we don't get there, that's okay. So we're looking for some general direction on those three scenarios. Is council satisfied to the point that we can go out and start getting some public feedback on these scenarios? Does council want us to go back to the drawing board? It's as simple as that. And one thing I have said over and over again throughout this project, there is no silver bullet to regulating short term rentals. When we've delved into this and looked at every resort municipality in other big cities in British Columbia and abroad, there are so many different ways to manage it. And anyone we've spoken to has not said that their way is the the best way. The closest we've gotten to is Whistler, and that's because Whistler had a lot of foresight when they were doing master planning in their community. Unfortunately, we are dealing with the legacy of this community not being built specifically for resort and tourism purposes. This was always a true community, and so we're bringing this on top of that. Second, we're going to look for some council direction regarding rescinding any existing development rights. This is pretty important because when we do go out to the public and we're having that broader stakeholder engagement, people are going to want to know, are you considering taking historic approvals out of the works? Is that on the table? So we would like to see some council direction regarding that today, or at least some preliminary thoughts. And then lastly, this challenge that we're finding within the downtown area, to sum it up as simply as I can, does council feel that the downtown should have more universal tourist accommodation rights and short term rental allowances? Regardless of the historic classification of the building as a mixed use building or a multi unit dwelling? Now, there's a couple of arguments for this. One could say downtown, we want tourists here, we want them spending and thriving within our downtown. Allow the buildings to be used as flexibly as possible. Make sure they comply with parking regulations, other zoning allowances, et cetera. The other side of that is downtown is our most walkable area. It makes the most sense to have these multi unit and mixed use dwellings used for employees that are working and living downtown and are also spending downtown. So this is a challenger one that from our perspective would be important to an important item to address as part of the short term rental project. So those are the three items, and we're happy to answer any questions that council may have, and we'll pass it back for discussion.
Okay, thanks for that. And so when I, I'm just going to ask about those who are in the commercial zones and have short term rental, are they currently kind of grandfathered in or that comes with a commercial tax zone, or whatever that they can do?
Through your worship, the downtown is it's the most formal term I can use, a bit of a hot pot. So historically, we have had buildings where they were issued short term rental allowances, even though short term rental wasn't a listed use within the zone. Some of them have been issued approvals under the use of rooming house, hotel, motel, motor hotels, even though they're in a mixed use building, they don't really meet that definition. Staff would not be recommending to take away any of those historic approvals. We have been continuing to issue those licenses if those licenses lapse and they aren't renewed for, you know, some time. It's one thing if there's a week between renewal, it's another thing if there's two years between renewal. We would require them to comply with existing zoning regulations at that time. But it is a challenge when council does have the ability to say, you know what, no, we want everyone to abide by the new rules, let's get them right, let's get them clear, force everyone to go back through the process, including those in the downtown, and get licenses issued appropriately. Because also keep in mind, we have some licenses that are issued downtown that are for a hotel where they might be paying a fifty five dollar a year license fee when they should be paying a seven hundred and fifty dollar a year license fee as a short term rental. So there are these items that would be beneficial if we did bring it up and not necessarily grandfather them, but it all depends on what rules we ultimately want to put in place for our downtown and downtown fringe area.
Great, thanks for that. Council Lucio.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. A question through to Mr. Simon, when we are talking about combining STRs and bed and breakfast and capping it at two bedroom max, how many bed and breakfasts that are currently operating would be negatively affected by this change?
Through your worship to Council Luciao, we have around fifty licenses issued for bed and breakfast. Unfortunately, the way that our software currently works, it is not spelt out how many bedrooms each of them have. We would have to manually go into each license and some of the historic records we have pertaining to those licenses wouldn't give us the information we need. So we would likely need to send the building inspector out on an inspection and verify how many bedrooms are actually being used. Based on my experience over the last five years, I would say we're probably looking at at least fifty percent, if not more. And I see Mr. Gips nodding his head, and I believe he probably feels the same way. At least fifty percent, if not more of them, vast majority are operating with more than two bedrooms.
Okay, thank you, and just one more question when it comes to rescinding grandfathered short term rental allowances. We're talking about the map with all the green properties. And do you have data on how long some of those have sat unused with their short term rental allowances? Because I would be in favor of rescinding those ones that have that designation but haven't been using it in the past.
Through your worship, Council Luciao, that is a very good question. We wouldn't have specific data on how long they have been not, 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 not using or not operating as a short term rental. We would be able to, we could go through and look at all the historic spot zone properties and look at licensing information pertaining to each one of those properties and come back to council with that. If council does want to potentially examine rescinding, one of the cautions I would say with that is where do we, where do we draw the line? And it's one of those things that's, that's easy to kind of have a conversation about, but then it's like, okay, you haven't been operating for a year, we're taking away your zoning. You haven't been operating for a year minus one day, you're in the clear. So it becomes really challenging to figure out, you know, what that appropriate number would ultimately be.
Good, thank you for that. Council Chair and Council Stakers.
Thanks, Mr. Souls. I want to kind of focus the discussion a bit more about the resident onsite operator versus an offsite operator or a long term rental versus the resident onsite operator. And I'm just curious how council feels about the difference. In my opinion, I like the Tofino and the Uclulit way of doing things where if you're going to have a short term rental, you must also provide at least one unit of long term rental. And I've been echoing that for the last three or four years, that I think that's a model that we should I guess try to echo, so that we're not losing our long term housing for our short term rental market. I'm just curious how the rest of council feels.
So with that designation, does that mean that you would want that long term resident to be a manager of that short term rental? Or just you want that available for those who are in our rental market?
Well, Tofino, for example, tried to do that, and what happened is they just created long term rentals, and then an offsite operator would come in and clean them and take care of a management. But if there was an emergency, there was an emergency number for whoever was occupying the suite in that example, or the main house and renting the suite. But realistically, I think Mr. Simon can comment on how many we have in town that tend to operate where they, again, have an onsite operator, but realistically, it's just a long term rental with an offsite operator.
And through your worship, Council Cherry, that's said an astute point, and it is one of the challenges that we do actually encounter frequently. And where is that line again? We have, you know, a house with a secondary suite, the person residing in the house is that principal resident onsite operator. They're responsible for the operations of the short term rental in the secondary suite. Well, are they now allowed to hire a cleaning company and come in? Are they now allowed to hire a property management company to help them with posting the Airbnb? And that is what we're seeing, so that line is getting really blurred about what the intent was. And there's also this other question, if you're a renter, and as a renter, you're that permanent resident onsite operator, is that also creating a little bit of inequity between you and your landlord now that you're, you might be getting forced into this short term rental operator role, which could prove vulnerable for those that are renters within the community? So it is something that we have seen come up. And it is requiring day to day interpretation based on the application that comes in, which is not the best way to get consistency in our reviews. So certainly, the Tofino and Yuki model has something to teach us. And I think the biggest thing for council to consider is, what is the goal that we're trying to achieve here? Are we trying to have someone onsite to respond to complaints that may arise as a result and that they can do it in an expedited manner? Or are we trying to protect long term housing while still allowing for some minor forms of short term rental? If council, if council wants to achieve the goal of the latter option, protecting that long term rental use, then I would agree that the Yuki and Tofino model is the way to go. If council wants to deal with the former item, the goal being deal with complaints in as expedited manner as possible, then we want to have that permanent resident being the onsite operator as well.
If I can comment on that, my goal here is the latter. I don't want to see the proliferation of long term rentals for short term. I don't see any benefits having a residential onsite operator, especially when we've seen through Kenny, Mr. Gips, you know, significant reduction in noise complaints and complaints about STRs. My personal goal here is to find the balance between long and short term, and I would like to change some of those definitions, but again, we'd love to have a conversation with council here about all of that.
Council Stakers.
Yeah, I think hearing what Council Cherry is saying in regards to the Tofino and Uclulit model is interesting. I myself would be extremely cautious about being overly prescriptive of the relationship required for an onsite resident to also be an operator manager, because we're going down a rabbit hole that hasn't been addressed throughout numerous housing policies that the city has administered. And there's other examples, but now is not the time for that discussion. I think in regards to having somebody living onsite, that is probably going to address a lot of the issues that are going to come up in regards to noise complaints and just having somebody live there year round. People take a lot of pride and ownership when they're living in these residences, and that's going to address a lot of the issues. And if there's problems occurring, they're going to let you know about that. So I'd be supportive of that. I'd also probably be a little bit cautious about, or I don't understand the rationale about, about capping it to two bedrooms. Not exactly sure, I'd have to better understand that model there to, to understand why are we, you know, being what, in my opinion, perhaps overly prescriptive in that nature. And then I think lastly, I think it's, you know, I'm not sure who here took economics one on one, but like it's Adam Smith and the invisible hearing. You know, free markets kind of regulate themselves. And that's kind of the pathway that I go down when I'm looking at this, and I'm thinking, you know, the market will eventually correct itself. That's my philosophy with housing, so.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Since you were first elected, how many years has it been, short term rentals been controversial? Since you were first elected, how many years has it been, short-term rentals been controversial?
Every year in the last ten, eleven?
It feels, uh, you know, it's, feel like, um, we, I, dog chasing my tail. Get the same argument, arguments. And it's not, that's not a criticism, but it's just a reality. These things keep on coming up.
What I gotta do is catch the tail.
And we, uh, we use the cliche rabbit hole quite a bit. I sometimes wonder if these are more mole tunnels that are collapsing in behind us kind of thing. Uh, just in, in general, just sort of thinking about that and this whole quagmire of issues that staff is doing an amazing job of trying to help, give us some guidance and options. The, if we go through the, just for some fundamentals is, okay, first of all, is there a problem? And I, and we will look at specific things. Is, is there a problem? And we'll say, okay, there's been problems with short-term rentals. But then if you start to ask, okay, well, what, what, what is that problem? You define that problem. Uh, and so it might be neighbor-to-neighbor conflict. It might be perception that somebody is getting better financial return, you know, jealousy factors. It, it might be that, that businesses are saying that, okay, well, it's not fair. You're not paying taxes and all these things. But so the, there's a multiple of, you know, possible problems or real problems in some cases. But then we start to say, okay, well, what's the solution? And we got multiple problems and then we start looking for the solutions. Everybody forget that, that question, well, what was that problem? Cause we've got different ones. And then the next thing is, when we come up with a, possibly a solution is, is that really fixing the problem? And, uh, in that, I think that's a, a problem that we have is we have multiple problems and we try and fixing them. But is it actually fixing that or? And then the next stage is, if it actually, actually is fixing the problem, whatever that is, um, is, are we creating new problems? And we've seen examples of that, that we create new problems. So even back in the early days, this spot just so many, we created new problems. Um, so that, you know, that's the, the challenge. And then, and one of the sort of background questions I have is, you know, do we need a little bit of a pause to let things sort of settle? Because there's so many things happen with the province, you know, these uh, forced things from the province. Um, that, that maybe they didn't ask some of those fundamental questions when they went through it. Um, I'll just make a couple of comments, uh, that Mr. Simon was asking about, getting a read on where we're at. I, I am fundamentally against rescinding rights that people have had in the past. And even if we change it, uh, you know, that, and I'm being careful on the wording. I know staff will appreciate it. So even if we change zoning, uh, the idea that something doesn't suddenly become illegal, but uh, legal, non-compliant. And so this heavy-handed thing that we're seeing more and more governments, you know, becoming more authoritarian and taking away rights. So for example, uh, B and B that's operating hypothetically in the big Eddie. Somebody's been doing it for years and they've been helping their mortgage or whatever. And, and so that's the, you know, I guess, is there really a problem there? Regardless of how many rooms, is there really, really a problem that's worth trying to fix? Um, and then this idea that somebody has, you know, put their investment, their time and energy and money and created lifestyle to, to rip that away from them. I, I will just be fundamentally, that's a different question from saying, okay, but we need to evolve as a society as typically municipalities have done in the past. And the, the, the sort of final point, I guess, that I have is that, that whole thing about the multiple units on the market for the long-term rental that, that the province forced, enabled, forced on communities. And that we're still seeing the evolution of those new units. And just a reminder that one of the problems that we didn't address is there was many, you know, equivalent to, um, vacation rentals, so like the Cube and places like that, that were taken, taken away, that those short-term rentals were taken away because of the market demands sort of further to Counselor Stakers.
Yeah.
And, and I, you know, getting back to that chasing the tail analogy, how much time, how much time and effort? Knowing based on your, you know, the time here, we'll try and fix things, but will it be fixed? And how many new problems have we, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks for that. Counselor Devlin and then now.
Uh, yeah, I'm just, just a few comments here. Um, to get to the meat of it, I do agree with Counselor Cherry, I think. Quintessentially, the goal here, at least from my perspective, is to protect long-term housing. Um, we've heard from the community that uh, short-term rentals are a thing that a number of community members want, uh, to be able to do. And I, to answer sort of your tongue-in-cheek hypothetical question, in my opinion, the problem with short-term rentals is that they exist at all. Um, but we're not here to, to go back in time and try to fix that. Um, so I think we've been told by members of the community that they want the ability to, to some degree, as it was phrased, participate in the tourism economy that we have growing in this town. Um, whilst I don't, I might have a fundamental issue with that, that mindset in general. I think that is the goal of the community and that is the job, as I see it, is to respect lots of the community. While still looking at it from a long-term housing view is, has been our, my lens this entire time. I think most of our lenses, I think most of us talked about the housing crisis and long-term housing, we all ran for this. So I don't think any of us have lost sight of that. So I think just, uh, I'm just getting my thoughts out there to answer Counselor Cherry's uh, question or the discussion. Yeah, it is definitely to protect long-term housing. Um, right now, what we see in terms of equity in the tourism economy, in terms of short-term rentals is we see a big block of where it's allowed. We see a lot of, I mean, we have a map, it's a lot of little things, but if we're going to turn that into practical um, conversation, your options, if you wanted to participate in tourism economy are to apply for some sort of variance, which is likely to be not supported, to buy one of those houses that is allowed to do it and then open up a short-term rental with that. Which those houses do not go up for sale all that often. There's a few properties scattered around the city, uh, or to buy a unit in a specific area where those are being actively developed as short-term rentals. Um, we're hearing that that's not fair. People don't think that's fair. I can agree with that. So I think that's just kind of my thoughts on the process. As long as we don't lose sight of the long-term housing element of this, I'm happy to support this going ahead as kind of it's being discussed. Um, but the, the long-term housing needs to come first. Uh, I'm not really interested in everything becoming short-term rentals. I'm not really in any more support of that, I should say. Um, I'm not really interested in seeing a proliferation of short-term rentals happening everywhere in the city without any sort of balances. Um, so as long as long-term is still the primary focus, I think these are good policy scenarios to bring to the, to the public and I'm interested to see what they say about it.
Good. All right. Thank you. Counselor Devlin.
Uh, yeah, um, through the chair, just a question, uh, for Mr. Simon regarding the topic of, of rescinding, um, uh, existing zoning. My question is focused on, on the different pathways, uh, that they got to that zoning, whether it's a CD zone or the spot zone, or it was allowed under, uh, uh, prior, prior to the spot zoning, grandfathering, uh, et cetera. Um, as the report notes, there's been changes to the provincial framework. Um, and my question is, um, can you provide a high-level overview on the, the, whether it's easier to rescind one or the other, or there's another argument? And one thing I would point about, I know we've chatted about this a few times, is that the spot zoning, uh, process, um, there was a condition that they need to continue operating. Part of the rationale behind that was it was a cap number system. So you don't want people, if you're going ahead with allowing something, you don't want to just grab it because it's going to add to the future sale value or something and not, not be doing it. Um, uh, and as I look at the, at here, you know, I sort of think of, well, there's a bunch here that are not on here or the, the report notes they're not being operated as that. So basically the question is the relative different zoning things, uh, how hard or possible are those going to be?
Through, through Counsel Orlando, very good question. Part of it, in my opinion, is related to the scale and scope of the operations, depending on what you're looking at peeling back hypothetically. So for example, we have a comprehensive development zone that allows for about a thousand dwelling units immediately adjacent to the resort. If council ever wanted to discuss rescinding that one, uh, for Mackenzie Village, that would be a monumental task riddled with immense legal risk. Regardless of whether or not there are provincial regulations that would support council and their land use authority doing that. Not to mention the practical implications of these units being constructed, purpose-built as short-term rental. Meaning they're not necessarily suitable for long-term rental housing if they've been built for short-term rental purposes. So that would be incredibly challenging. Some of the spot zone properties that were historically single-family dwellings, uh, rescinding those approvals could be easier from a, a legal risk perspective as well as a functionality perspective of the dwelling unit itself, more suitable for long-term occupancy. Now that said, we have some spot zones in the community where that is funding critical operations like childcare for the individual that's running them. So there are these other implications that arise as a result and it's not as cut and dry as someone's using these properties just to make a major profit. Some of these profits are being directly reinvested in the community and things that are dire need in Revelstoke. So it would vary. Um, you know, it'd certainly be a challenge, in my opinion, legally speaking, even if council has the legal authority to do so. I don't think anyone in here wants to see tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money as well as staff time and council time drawn through legal matters because we got two-hundred-and-fifty different property owners that all of a sudden have to run, pull that from under them when that's what they were, uh, enabled to do when they purchased a property. So certainly some would be easier than others.
Counselor.
Uh, actually just a question. Uh, can you just like, maybe, maybe I'm not quite understanding the rationale behind it. I get like the, uh, historic, uh, but the, when we talk about policy, discussion, policies and number three, um, the cap system, it does say it would apply to existing approvals except within CD zones. Can you kind of explain the rationale of why we wouldn't include CD zones and kind of an overall cap system?
Through your worship to Counselor Devlin, one of the major challenges of some of our CD zones is we don't know exactly how many units are going to be constructed. So some of these CD zones are regulated based on what we call floor area ratio. So in a nutshell, it's a unit of measurement that's a density calculation that ultimately dictates density by size of the building rather than number of dwelling units on the property. We would genuinely be throwing a dart in the air with a blindfold on to try and guess how many units are going to come in some of these CD zones. The last estimate we did, it ranged between one-thousand and thirty-five-hundred units within these CD zones, depending on the development form that we're seeing. And you know, a good example is out on the highway, we just had seventy-five units get occupancy all for long-term rental purposes. That could have just as easily been seventy-five short-term rentals based on their zoning allowances. It could have just as easily been two-hundred-and-seventy-five short-term rentals based on the density allowances that they actually have within that zone. So it's really challenging to start to wager a guess within these CD zones, which is why we've been pretty clear, for better or worse, the only option is to leave them out of any potential cap system.
Yeah, just, uh, just a follow-up question. I guess maybe, uh, I'm looking at a different perspective. This is just kind of, I guess, maybe it's not a question, just kind of a follow-up comment. Um, as hypothetical, random numbers pulled off my head, they, they take these with as much of a grain as all of you want. Let's say hypothetically, we as a, as a council decided we wanted to cap short-term rentals at twenty percent of the overall dwelling units in Revelstoke. Um, whilst I do understand that, you know, the CD zones might decide to build a thousand units. Um, I, I just, I, I guess my point of view, that's kind of outside of it because we would be capping business licenses. We wouldn't be capping zoning. We wouldn't be saying, you can't, you're not zoned for it. We would be saying, okay, get a business license for it, hit the cap essentially. So I mean, to me, those are kind of, it's kind of a non-secular how many there are, um, as, as I would see it. Just kind of my thought process there is kind of, it's, it's kind of irrelevant. Say twenty percent of dwelling units in Revelstoke can be, can get a business license. Uh, if you want to get a Q for a business license, because now you have these new ones that and we're full, then get a Q and hopefully above that's just kind of my perspective of it, but.
Counselor Stakers, I'd like to.
Yeah, sure. I just, uh, just responding to Counselor Devlin's. I just wondering if that scenario that you're presenting in regards to the cap, that that's going to create the inequality for residences that want to participate in the tourism economy? And then ultimately too, you know, administratively, you know, it's a little bit far-fetched at this point to know. But then does that, how does that business license, is it tied to the property? Is it tied to the ownership of the property? Is there ways of circumventing how that business license carries on?
I mean, these are, these are questions I don't know. I don't know the specifics of business license if they're transferred with the property. I mean, from my point of view, that's honestly maybe one of the more equitable systems. Everyone has the same opportunity to have a business license if they apply for the business license and we have a number of how many of those business licenses and we're not picking. Cause right now, as I've kind of said, the inequity is certain areas are yes and certain areas are no. And if you're in a no, you're in a no, and that's never going to change for you unless you get a variance, which at, at this point will not be supported. Whereas a cap system would be like, you know, you are as able to get into the queue as anybody else. You just have, anyway, these are, it's, it's a very hypothetical scenario. I'm not pushing for any specific policy scenario at this point. It's far too.
Counselor Chair.
Mary Souls, uh, I'd just like to invite Director Simon into this conversation because this has been talked about before. Um, can you please give council an update on how licenses would or would not run with the sale of property?
Through your worship to Counselor Cherry, so individuals can apply for a change of owner to separate application form that they would ultimately complete. Um, if your property is zoned for it, then you're zoned for it. We would have to work it out if we did want to come up with some type of cap system, whether or not that license would run with the land via a change in ownership application. Or if a change in ownership would ultimately result in your license being null and void and therefore you're not able to sell the property with an active short-term rental business license to try and escalate the value or increase the value of it.
Counselor Stakers.
Oh, I think I'll just have a side discussion with Counselor Cherry in regards to how corporate, corporations can own a property and then transfer corporate ownership with a huge license.
They've changed that. Provincial regulations have changed. You have to, I already asked that question.
Okay. I want to move this along. So we can give, uh, Mr. Simon some marching orders to this Florida community. So I, but I want to give my perspective here on some of that stuff. First of all, I'm, I don't think I'm interested in pulling back historic approvals. Unless of course these, uh, like the spot zones haven't been running for a couple of years, something like that. But it's obviously that sort of thing. Uh, I'm concerned about, uh, you know, how do we get, do we have a certain area of town? Is there a cap? That sort of thing. My concern is with the CD zones, if they have already, I'm not interested in bringing them and if we're going to bring them into a cap, they've already got the number of units and we've made an agreement with them. My concern will be, what are their contributions to the community when this is built up? Or as they're building, some sort of contributions to the community that they're actually giving back to the community. They're making money, they should be giving it back to the community and looking at that sort of thing. Um, and then, you know, I, I'm going to ask about consolidating the B and Bs and short-term rentals into when they're used. I'm not opposed to that, but I don't want to hinder those who already have B and Bs that were taking away that income. So as Counselor Palmer has said, these people have, uh, have, you know, put their stuff, I, I have, uh, I have a single mother next door to me who has a B and B who operates it absolutely efficiently. Uh, they're quiet. It's a, it's a well-taken parent. She has guests almost every weekend. And I'm in awe of that sort of thing. She's beautified her yard. She's done everything. She's complied. She's a good neighbor to the community. So I don't want to see those people lose out, uh, and she needs that income. So I, so I look at that sort of thing. So, but also, uh, you know, there are people in the community that have said, yes, absolutely. I want to be part of that financial dividend by, you know, can you allow me to do it? And then we've got the other side where, you know, I asked you the question at the beginning, how many are in the community? That may not be legal. It's always hard to determine who's legal, who's not legal. But there's more people that are making money illegally than there is legally, or half and half sort of thing. And, and then my concern is, how do we clamp down on that? Or do we say to them, some of those people might be eligible to apply to do, to do things? What I don't want happening is what we saw. What I don't want happening is what we saw in Palona, where people came in, they bought apartments for short term rental. And the government, provincial governments come along and said, nope, you're principal only now. And these people are going, now I want you. Right? And so I'm not interested in capping on bedrooms as well because I look at my own family. If I'm going somewhere, I'm going to try and invite my family to come. So I'm going to need. Three bedrooms or four bedrooms or that sort of thing. Two bedrooms is not going to work unless it's just my wife and I. So, you know, I don't want to limit those sorts of things and I just want council to be cognizant of that. But so my question to you, Mr. Simon, is what do you need from us? Can we alter? Some of these scenarios to go back to the community or should we leave the scenarios as? To go into the community to weigh in? And then we've done this before. Are we causing more of a problem? So I'm going to ask Mr. Simon to weigh in before I get you to speak, Mr. Cherry.
To your worship. I I keep coming back to council's discussion about the dog chasing its tail. Again, this is where the scenarios that we're presenting to you, it's not anything earth shattering. It's not anything that's so incredibly unique that hasn't been tried elsewhere. There's only so many ways to crack this nut.
Yep.
And our current framework right now isn't perfect. There's certainly areas for improvement. Uh, do I think it needs to be thrown out? No. Do I think that some of these scenarios? May potentially to Council Palmer's point, create some additional unintended consequences in the community? Most certainly, right? And as much as we have a consultant on this project and their scope is to support us in unpacking each of these scenarios to understand. The economic and the housing implications so that council has the best data possible. It's only as good as the model we build, which is only as good as the data we can put into it, which to be fully transparent has been a challenging undertaking thus far, which is why the project is taking a little bit of extra time as well. Um, if council. Wanted to take a bit of a pause on this, I could certainly appreciate that. Um, I do think one thing that is critically important for us to unpack as part of this is just from an education perspective and because we do have a consultant that is underway in building this model. Is at least understanding what the impact to this community would be, not only for this council, but for future councils. What would happen if we did opt in to the provincial requirement just to kind of, I know council is taking that off the table. But I think that the implications associated that are still important to determine so that we have that data in our back pocket as we move forward in the future. And to also educate this community on the importance of tourism. Um, if council does want to continue to move forward with this, I think the three scenarios that have been presented. Um, with some slight tweaks when we actually get into the nitty gritty bylaw amendment pieces, for instance, the number of bedrooms that we want to have. Determining whether it's a permanent resident on site operator or just a permanent resident who's living on site where a twenty four seven property management company is operating the. The short term rental, those are all things that can come out as we present those detailed zoning by law amendments to you. Um, but I really think that right now today, a big part of this was not only to give council an update on where we're at. Get council's blessing as we we move forward on presenting this to the public before we we do go out. We obviously want council feedback. Um, really understanding and gathering, there's not much appetite to rescind historic approvals, which is good information for us to have when we go out to the public. And, uh, I'm hearing with respect to the downtown area. It's it's a challenging area with. Benefits and costs on both sides and maybe the way our current framework is operating is the way to kind of leave it. Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of different elements to this discussion, most certainly.
Counselor Cherry, we're, we're going to come up with some information for you shortly, Council Chair.
Paul's going to do it right now.
Okay.
Uh. I don't want to put this on the floor as a motion, but I would like to entertain policy scenario number one with a number of potential changes if councils. Interested, uh, for example, instead of consolidate bed and breakfast and S T R using the one new zone, consider consolidating. Uh, instead of allow S T Rs throughout the city when operated permanent residents, I would like to see that change to, uh. A requirement that they. Have a long term rental. On the facility, uh, whether that be a, you know, the main house or the base or suites or care suite. I'd like you to come up and present that to us. Um, as for could cap the number of bedrooms to two? I would put consider, uh, because I'd like to see what that would do to our current framework. Uh, and then for excluding existing licenses and C D zones from the rules, I'm fine with leaving that one as is. Happy to entertain any other changes if councils would like to give a little direction, but this is where I'm leaning towards. I think it's an equitable solution. Towards everything. And I'll also add that although I'm potentially suggesting allowing S T Rs throughout the city. Um, understand that that's still not going to be allowed when it comes to parking requirements, et cetera, which is another way this is all going to be flushed out.
That's good. Yeah, Council Palmer and Council Devlin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Sol. So just further to Director's report of where we're at. So this is the discussion we're having. In my understanding, uh, based on these discussions, the. Without any specific motion that staff's intention to take this feedback, global feedback. It's challenging that would be, want to be in your shoes, uh, and. Figure out some refinement of those scenarios. Uh, for discussion anticipated in November and then going to public engagement. So this is a decision that we made some time ago to. This sort of step process and I'm fine with it. And, uh. I I I I think with, you know, the the difficulty, each one of us is coming with our own lens on the situation. And ultimately we'll want the community's lens, whether the council. Council Orlando?
Close enough.
The, um, Council Devlin. Who has mentioned, you know, okay, how how do we represent those community interests? It it's getting down to those details and the scenarios because I suspect. Uh, well, I'm pretty sure that the community is not going to agree on the the low fine details and I think we're unlikely as well collectively. So that that's the challenge for staff is bringing scenarios and then getting feedback. Then I guess the next step after that is, um. Staff may be looking at, okay, do we go ahead and do some more drive, uh, by law drafting? To try and fix perceived problems, create some new ones.
It's not intended consequences. So Council Devlin and Council.
Uh, no, I was, I was actually, I think you've covered most of what I was going to say, Council Palmer. I was just going to mention that this is, yeah, this discussion point, so. Yeah, I don't need to back any specific scenario at this point in my view, but just, uh, I'm fine with these being. Kind of where you start the the process of regation public from, um, I think these are three. Scenarios that all kind of encompass what council has always kind of given the idea that we were looking for to varying degrees and then. What the public feedback and what those actually look like in a more specific economic and housing sort of lens are going to drive where we back. From there and more refinement as time goes on. But this is a really good start.
Good, Council Devlin.
Yeah, thank you. Um, one of, I want to echo comments I made at the. E P C meeting. I still feel that we need to hammer down some of the definitions of the language a little bit better. Uh, as a, as a point, I'm looking at policy scenario number one that we we have been discussing. Bullet point two says. Allow for S T Rs throughout the city when operated by a permanent resident. So. One interpretation of this could be, well, I'm a permanent resident of the city. I've been here for a while, so I can operate S G Rs throughout the city. Is is that the intent of this is my question? So. I don't think it is. I think the idea is that somebody actually lives on that property, but is that an owner of the property or is that somebody who? Rents and is the operator of it? Or even when we're talking about allow, uh, a requirement to have rental there, does that mean if I own a house? And have an S T R, I'm also required to have a third, you know, rental suite or does me living there count as that rental suite? Without those, um, crisp, uh, crisper definitions, uh. Throughout the discussion, it it becomes challenging to, uh, be sure that everybody is on the same page and knowing what we are talking about. Um, so that's one thought. Another one too is in general, I have a lot of concern with any kind of cap system. Um, and the reason being is I don't think at the end it has a good outcome. I did oppose the spot zoning. Uh, system when we did that, I thought it would be, uh, uh, problematic for council and it was much worse than I thought. Um, and the the reality is it sets in this sort of, um. Rush to be getting under the cap. Uh, and we may not end up with, you know, the right mix that we want, uh, or that we're thinking for. The report here notes that a more traditional planning approach would be to. Pre identify where we want it. Um, and if we recall, for example, uh, when R M R was here doing a recent update. In some of their new townhomes, they're, they are segmenting ones that can be short term rental and ones that are not allowed to be short term rental. And that's wisdom gleaned from, uh, their customers or, you know, customer research is that. If this is my home, I don't necessarily want to be living where there's someone new upstairs and downstairs and left, left and right of me. I would prefer to have that. Or if I'm going to Airbnb something, I'd rather not be tiptoeing around a residential neighborhood where everyone's giving me, you know, the eye for. Um, driving my, you know, sled trailer into the, into the neighborhood there. So, um, that is a general thought. Um, um, I think, uh, any sort of a cap system, um, would need a lot of work in how we're doing it and I'd even know about the permissibility of it. So. Uh, for example, if we do one by one first come, first served, that kind of thing. I don't support that. Is there, are, would there be options to, uh, have a six month intake process and then? Rank them according to the objectives that we have set out or something like that. I don't even know if that's possible or not. That's, you know. Whole other thing, but, uh, the straight system is a straight cap system, I think, will not get us the outcome that we, that we want. Um, also with rescinding, um. Uh, uses, I think that should be a consideration, uh. Especially for things that really look, uh, walk and talk like a duck, uh. In that nobody's been using it, nobody's been renting it for years. They have the zoning on there. That they, for example, in the spot zoning process, it was very clear if your business license lapses, if you're not operating this, this is going to fall off. Does that clash with what the the laws say? And we've had debates about that one and it's a hard one. It's hard to, um. Uh, pull back on, uh, zoning entitlement, but I think, uh. At least in that sense, we need to, uh, know what we are considering. And, um, finally, I think whatever we're doing, um, one thing that I would favor would be considering. Uh, looking at, um, what is the best place for, um. For allowing any extra short term rentals if we're going to do that is it is on a, an area where. Wherever we want it to be, that makes the most sense from a planning perspective, from use with other, other areas, um, and yeah. And lastly, last thing is, you know, I do, uh, express the same sort of, uh. Reluctance to engage in short term rentals yet again. Um, it's a challenge, um, and it's difficult to get it to. Uh, uh, something that, you know, leaves, uh, the community with a good taste in their mouth after we go through it and, uh. Would be concerned that we're going to be back here two years from now. Uh, anecdotally, I'm not sure how long the the province's current framework is going to last. Um, that's just my hunch that, uh. Um, it may face significant revision at one point, no idea what's going on, but I think, uh, there have been some challenges for it. Um, yeah, and those are mostly the problems here.
Good. So, um, at this point. Mr. Simon, do you have enough information to go away, uh, and bring something back and to go out to the community with? Or would you like us to find things a little bit better?
Through your worship, I think we have some, some good feedback today. One, one question I would have for council. Our, our plan was to kind of take the feedback today, do some refining and then come back in November as we work through this economic and housing impact model. To present some findings to you guys and then go out to the public. Would council still like us to do that? It would, it would likely mean that we're going to grapple with this, you know, if we're back here in committee of the whole mid November. Is it worth doing public engagement first couple of weeks of December where it's genuinely not the best time to do public engagements? That might push it into the. Into the early stages of January, um, or is council just wanting us to go ahead with the, the draft scenarios directly to, to the public?
Yeah, yeah, I, I, it's a good, good question. I think. Drop something, but what I also want to see is, um, as you had stated. You know, what would the scenarios look like if we opted it? So that we have a full wholesome idea of what things are. Council Palmer?
Uh, thank you. Just further to the director's question about the timing and stuff. I was, I was looking at that and was. Uh, refraining from, uh, making some comments. Uh, so one, we got big budget stuff that we're still driving through. Yes, we could. We're already, uh, mid October. November is going to be on us in no time at all. And then of course we're approaching Christmas. Um, so to, in my, in my mind, this was an ambitious, uh, uh, an ambitious schedule. Uh, and yet we're. With the consultant stuff, you're marching down a certain path. Uh, the draft amending bylaws winter twenty twenty five seems very ambitious to me. Uh, it's possible, but I I would think if we're at that point of amending bylaws that quickly that we will be making mistakes. And then, so, uh, the, uh. Consideration in public hearing, uh, twenty twenty six. If it's getting moved along, it is, we're almost forcing an election issue again.
Yeah, so those are two things that I was concerned about. Uh, I'd like to, to put off the consultation until the beginning of the year. I think that would be good. I am concerned about it becoming an election issue, but if we do it properly and give them enough options. And we might be able to, uh, deal with that prior to, everything can become an election issue once we get past that. Probably equal or made in twenty twenty six. Uh, people will remember if they're not happy. And it, and it can, this could become an election issue just because we're talking. Um, so. If council's okay with letting staff, uh, talk with a consultant, see if they can come up back, come back with something. No, either in November, beginning of December for us to look at. Mr. Simon and then be able to go out in February to do consultation with the community. From a council's perspective, do you think that's doable? Are you comfortable with that? Any comments? Uh, if we had something come back from Mr. Simon, it's either later in November or beginning of December for us to look at. And then, uh, go out in February to the community.
Yeah, basically you're saying carry, carry on, but not so, we're not forcing to be so tight.
Yeah.
Kind of thing, yeah.
Can you guys live with that?
Yeah, I guess I have to.
Thanks for your input. Council, you okay with that? All right. Let's plan that, uh, so there's no resolution you need from us at this point. All right. Thank you for your time and on me. Appreciate that. You and me the pilots. All right, uh, thanks for your patience, uh, wastewater treatment, all things that go downhill. Oh, thanks for that. Yes, let's do that. You're here. You got guns. Come on out.
I have to go to the gym lately. I don't have that much. My guns are kind of.
If you have a question before, before I start, uh. Can you, uh, shut down all the illegal, uh, Airbnbs like, you got the guns?
Whatever we do last time through spot zoning, we had to call the cops to come into this room and keep control of it. Don't worry about hard drugs, worry about Airbnbs.
Yeah. Well, priorities, I suppose. Uh. Uh, Mayor Solz and council, thanks for, uh, having us today myself, uh. I've brought along, uh, uh. Corporal Philippi from the detachment as an observer. He's been here before, but he's come along to, to observe and, uh. Yeah. And, uh, Staff Sergeant Sean Bag, he's from the Southeast District, uh, Headquarters Office. He's the. Uh, advisory N C O for this, uh, area here. So, um. He helps me out from, on a regular basis. So, yeah. Um, so quickly, uh, I'm here to present the twenty twenty five, uh, the second quarter report. It's a little late, uh, in the hopper here, but, um. uh, we'll get right to it. Pretty straightforward. I, you probably all have it on your computers. I don't have my computer and I'm sorry. I don't know if Janet can throw it up there or not, but um, I uh guess I should have brought my things. Apologize for that.
All right, just tell us.
I have my, I have my sheet here anyway, but uh, yeah, so I just did.
It in here, so go ahead.
Yes, I can show it on the screen if you would like.
Yes, please, Miss Tellus Hall, that'd be great.
Uh, I just did a uh quick recap with some fancy colorful, colorful, colorful graphs uh over the three-year um, just to show three-year trends.
Who's in the safety bear outfit?
Oh, on the front?
Yeah, it's so tough on the screen though.
Uh, yeah, that was our uh previous victim services. We conned her into wearing the safety bear costume.
Twenty pounds lighter now. I wore that one.
Yes, especially on a hot, that was at the uh the musical ride in it. If you recall, it was not, uh, it was a warm day.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, so she's a, she's a trooper for sure. Um, anyways, uh, I, I did the comparison for the last three years for uh some of these stats. I, I won't bore you with the, the big stats. Uh, I think you all had a copy of it, the second quarter, the actual second quarter report. Nothing astonishing uh in the stats uh really uh to, to talk about. Um, we're pretty static uh across over the three years. Um, um, for persons, property and collisions. Um uh, really, it's, as I say every time I come here, it's incredible to look at stats over, over a timeframe. They all seem to line up relatively the same. And we deal with such low numbers. So uh percentage-wise, yes, sometimes we have a bit of a swing in percentage, but it's literally uh, you know, tens of files sometimes. So, um I just put through the provincial area stats in there too. So for some comparison as well over the last three years, uh, again, very, very similar. Um, we are down in collisions, which is nice. And um in, uh, for twenty twenty-five in the second quarter there. So um, most of the time, that's weather-related stuff and uh, you know, and volume as well, but generally weather-related. If we have a weather event, that'll, that'll pop our numbers up um in the provincial area generally and also within the municipality. Um, moving on to the next page, impaired driving um enforcement. And uh, it's one of our uh one of our APP, uh, our, our yearly planning um goals is uh impaired driving enforcement and traffic enforcement within the municipality. Um, that seems to be a hot, uh, you know, if, if, if you wanna look for hot button topics, uh um, traffic enforcement within the municipality uh is one of them. So we, we focus uh some of our time and effort on that area. So as you can see, um, uh, I did, I put the provincial stat in there too, but um as a comparison over year over year here in the last three years, it's almost even very, very similar. Um in terms of impaired driving um files that we've uh um undertaken in that, in the quarter.
Um, yes. Just can I just ask, is there, do we have frequent flyers that are doing this sort of thing? Or because we're a tourist community, we've got people that are thinking?
Um, your worship that, so you're, you're exactly right. We, uh, if I look at the stats and the, and the um, when I drill down into the entity of the stat, like the, the, the subject of the complaint, the driver, um, it is, it's, it varies. We do have some frequent flyers, but I think we've dealt with most of the frequent flyers that are local. Um, and if uh, when it comes to immediate roadside prohibitions, if someone uh has a second or a third or a fourth uh impaired driving uh infraction, uh, we actually proceed by criminal code. So like, we'll move into that area. Um, but uh, yeah, when we look at our stats, a high percentage of the drivers that we um that we uh pull over and they uh fail a roadside screening device are uh from, not from, not local.
Okay.
Yeah. So uh, often are tourists from other places or potentially people that are here for a short term, either working or, or visiting. So uh, I don't have the exact stat on that, but it, yeah. Uh, municipal traffic enforcement, uh, or sorry, I made a mistake on this. I was looking at it this morning and it's actually a total traffic enforcement for the second quarter. That includes our provincial traffic. This is just general duty traffic enforcement. I didn't include the, the highway patrol. I'll, I'll put the highway patrol and traffic enforcement stats in our, in my final report for the year. But um, um, and this one's a little, this is the only anomaly really in this whole uh presentation, but in two thousand twenty-three, clearly in that second quarter, we were really on fire with the traffic tickets um in, in the area. Uh, but generally speaking, we hover about that one twenty, um, uh, hundred and twenty area there. So, cause I looked back and I was, uh, but obviously someone very motivated that quarter uh for, for ticketing.
I think I remember that guy.
There, there you go. There you go. And then uh, and, and then uh, the calls for service in the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Again, when you look at the numbers, they're almost bang on, uh, you know, municipal, provincial, and then the total numbers. So nine hundred and seventy-five files in twenty twenty-five. Uh, slightly up, slightly up from um the previous years. But again, um, we have been trending up. You know, basically every quarter, we, we trend up every year. Overall, we trend up. And it's really from the popularity of uh, obviously our tour, tourism industry, uh, the resort community um, and our population increase, that gradual population increase. So uh, we're just seeing that. Since COVID, we've seen our file count just continually creeping up. Um, our annual performance planning, as I mentioned earlier, traffic uh is uh, traffic are two of the, of the um goals for our annual performance planning. That's impaired driving and, and speed enforcement within the municipality and outside the municipality as well. Especially in school zones, uh, construction zones uh as of late and um, you know, coming down from the ski hill, et cetera. So um, theft from auto continues to be something that we try to um make um, do both proactive and uh um, we, well, we do reactive policing uh some uh on that as well from when we get calls for service. It seems to be generally in the um uh area nearest the highway one. Um you know, uh, and then also one thing I will point out theft from auto. We often see autos, uh, sorry, uh, when we go to these calls, the, the, the vehicle wasn't secure. There were valuables left on, um, you know, uh, for people to see through, through the, through the window. And um, if we do have thefts of auto, it's often because the keys are left in the vehicle. So um, it's a, it's a, it's an easy target for somebody. So we stress uh to, you know, um to all our clients out there to make sure that they, you know, out of sight, out of mind, uh, lock your car, lockout auto crime. And uh, and uh, I recently spoke to ICBC where we're going to try to get um uh, them to provide us with uh some more lockout crime uh uh signage for some of the um parking lot areas, et cetera, in uh, especially near the highway one corridor where we have transient people coming through. Um, that's, you know, they're very often, our theft from vehicles are quick, uh, grab the change, grab whatever's on the seat and away they go. So uh, unfortunately, as a clearable type of file, it's, we have a, those are one of the hardest ones to solve because they're kind of a smash and grab or an open and grab type scenario. So.
So just a, just a question. The new vehicle, so everything's push plant. Somebody gets into my vehicle, how often they get, we're coming. Will you get a block? Will we get ten blocks?
Well, if the key is in the secreted in the vehicle, uh, well, I don't, uh, most of the new vehicles nowadays have security systems that the, wouldn't, wouldn't allow that. We have seen um in other parts of the country where electronic, um, uh, they use electronic devices to actually defeat the security systems and start the vehicle um, on s- certain vehicles that are, uh, you know, um, uh don't have this uh certain software that, or has certain software that they can penetrate. So it has happened. We haven't had cases uh of that nature here, I don't believe, but I know in Eastern Canada, they were, uh, there was, there was lots of that happening. So uh, the hackers are hacking the cars and stealing them that way.
So we're gonna have to still depend on truck monkeys?
Yeah, truck monkey is not a bad option.
Thank you.
Me and you might be the only one that remember those. Um, uh, and then the other focus, we changed it up a little bit this year for our uh annual performance planning and, and really, um, we wanted to add, we do so much police community uh police community relations and partnerships throughout the community, um, mainly through the schools, um through uh um uh Community Connections Food Bank. We assist with the diversity uh services, food drive. We do cram the cruiser. Um, we do a ton of things at the schools that um, you know, people may or may not realize, uh, bike rodeos, um, safety presentations, uh, you know, lots of community policing in, in that respect. So uh, we, we uh made it one of our, uh, one of our priority items this year because it is, has been historically a priority that, that we just didn't identify. So um um, we're always open to input on our performance planning. Uh, we do it every year and I welcome uh input from uh council um, and our partners in, in the community, et cetera, about what they feel that uh, or they believe that we should focus on within the community. I do um generally look at all of our stats and look at what we can focus on, um, both proactively and, and uh reactively in, in our communities. So.
Appreciate that. Counselor?
Perfect.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Mayor Solz, uh, thank Sergeant Dutz. Um very uh interesting sort of see that small creep. We've seen that over the years. Um, question for you, uh, and it may have been an omission on our part, but we're looking at going to thirty K through the the city for a speed limit, you know, outside of arterials. Uh, do you foresee that having any implication, any, any sort of opinions, uh, you know, a good idea? Wh- whatever, um, uh, any implications for you and your people?
Uh, through the chair, Counselor Palmer. Um, well, I, I, I've had some discussion with the, with the Mayor Solz about the, the uh speed zone change. Um, I, you know, I, I'm not an expert in, in that particular area, whether or not that, that, you know, uh that will change drivers' behaviors. I know that um, uh in some places in, in, in town, I think a thirty kilometer zone is probably appropriate. Um uh, will it change drivers' behaviors at the speeds that we see a fifty kilometer to, you know, fifty, sixty kilometers an hour? Um, I'm not sure. Um, will it create more enforcement work on our side? I suppose, uh, it would, it would likely, it likely would. Um Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I don't know how the, how um, what difference it will make it. Yeah.
So uh, appreciate that. Um, being a politician, I don't have to be so diplomatic. Uh, the um sort of understand, okay, well, you know, with, we, we have, with fifty K, we have drug speeding problems, big speeding problems. And it's uh and certainly I'm of the opinion, having caught traffic calming design, so regardless of signs, I don't actually like signs. Uh, it's better that things should just be intuitive. Um however, other community, like I think Vancouver went thirty K as well. And there's maybe it's an appeasement to the public in some ways, but it, it is sending a message and then hopefully there's a contagion through peer pressure saying, hey, you know, actually we're slowed down a little bit. So but yeah, I'm sort of curious if it creates more work. I, I, I almost think that maybe you, you, I, I, I don't suspect you're gonna be setting up radar traps on Mackenzie for thirty K kind of um, enforcement scenarios. Maybe you will. Um, uh, but so, yeah, thank you, thank you for that. A second question through the chair. Um there's a perception in the social media areas of um higher crime in um residential areas or petty theft kind of stuff where people lurking and stuff. I, I wonder if it's more that more people have surveillance systems out there. Uh, I, I don't know. Um your stats don't necessarily indicate any big increase uh necessarily. Um however, I, again, sort of on sort of the social consciousness or the, appeasement's the wrong word, but a feeling of security. Um, do you have any comments on the neighborhood watch programs that have been in other communities? We don't have enough of it in, in the merits of, of that kind of it's something I've been thinking about in that context of um perceived problems with people roaming through yards and stuff.
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Palmer. I, so um, I have been worked in other communities where we did have neighborhood watch uh type programs. Uh, the uh, the issue with, or some, sometimes the issue with neighborhood watch type programs um, is we uh need to manage volunteers uh uh for that. And um, so it, it, it adds another bit of a layer component to uh to that. And you have to seek people that are, you know, neighborhood champions or uh, you know, local champions that want to participate um, in those type of programs. Do they work? Again, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure if they do or not. Um, most people often, you know, in my experience, are watching out for their neighbors' houses and, you know, in, especially in tighter knit communities where they know everybody on the street and they're keeping an eye. Um, yes, I've been aware of uh, you know, social media type posts about uh, you know, people lurking in the shadows. Um, I own, we're only as good as the files that are, you know, uh, as good as the files that are provide, you know, uh, reported to us. So incidents that are reported to us. So I, what I do urge is that the community reports suspicious occurrences, break and enters. Um, you know, trespassing, et cetera, by night uh to us. So we can document those files and potentially investigate them if there's uh, you know, evidence to proceed. So um, what I do, I guess become frustrated with is the social media stuff about this stuff. But we, uh, you know, when I look on the file count the next morning, uh, it's, it's not, it's not been reported, but it's been reported on Facebook. You know, cause that's more important. So um, I, I don't take a lot of, I take a lot of that with a grain of salt, to be honest. Um uh, is there a, a spike in uh that kind of um calls for, or crime, I guess, because there wouldn't be calls for service or not reported to us. But that kind of crime, I hi- I'm highly suspicious, to be perfectly honest. Um, if it was that important, they would call us. So um, I don't, you know, it'd be somewhat blunt, I suppose. So uh but I'm, you know, like, our phone is all, you know, our phone is always on. We're like, you know, we're, we're here to answer the calls. And so and if the calls don't come, then we don't know they exist except from Facebook. And like, uh, I'm, you know, we're, we don't, social media, we're not social media police. So um, yeah, you know, like, uh, I guess that's all I can say on that. Going back to the traffic thing as well, I've, I've had lots of conversations with Mr. Black about different um different areas of the city where I've, you know, made suggestions or we've, I've, I've, you know, consulted on certain areas where things could be possibly better, traffic calmed, as you, as you say. And um, so I'm always open to uh have those calm, those conversations, um, be part of that dialogue. And uh, you know, anything we can make, how we can make the streets safer and the speeds lower, uh, we're, we're absolutely all uh committed to assisting with that within the city.
Thank you. Good. Thank you. All right. Go ahead and turn, Stephanie.
Uh, yes, so I, I, I've added a couple of things of interest that uh I wanted to bring to you um in consultation with the staff, city staff, and also with uh Mr. Zimmer from uh the um Public Works. Um, the RCMP has recently approved uh and has policy around uh exchange zones. So these would be like for marketplace. Back to Facebook again, but uh like marketplace uh um uh selling of items or exchange of items. It's a big thing in the, in the lower mainland and other, other municipalities. And what it is, is that um we, we provide a safe, we provide a space for the exchange of goods um and where people can meet. Um, and what I propose is that uh, these are the approved signs through the RCMP. And they would be um, have the city's uh name on it as, it's the city of Revelstoke. And it would be out front of our office. Um, and where we have surveillance uh video there, uh, with the caveat that this is um, uh, it, it With the caveat that this is, it is not, we don't accept any liability, et cetera. So with staff's approval, we were going to move forward with putting these signs just out front of our buildings as a place for people to, to meet, to exchange goods. And so.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Great idea.
Bicycle.
Well, sorry, hopefully.
Yeah.
I was going to comment about the amount of services that you can buy on social media nowadays, but.
Moving on to something I think is quite exciting and I've been quite involved with. So along with my job here as a detachment commander, I also sit on a few boards provincially and within the district. So anyways, I've been involved with what's called Health I Am, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with it. But I can finally kind of provide you with some detail on it. It's been in the works for a few years now. It is a, it is a tool that was developed in Ontario and has since been rolled out to, into NBC. We're currently in pilot, the pilot process in British Columbia, but it's been endorsed by the BC Chiefs of Police. And what it is, is that it's an application that will go on our police RCMP smartphones. And it's, it assists us when we are assessing people for mental health apprehension. So it is an app that will provide us with some, a matrix for decision making, basically, to either apprehend or not apprehend of the Mental Health Act. And then what it does is that we input some data into this app, it's secure. And, and this app, if we've dealt with that subject previously, it will provide us with some background information and some safety information as well for us. And which will give us a heads up about who we're dealing with if we haven't dealt with them before. And then what it, once we fill out the, we fill out the quick matrix, which is basically a risk, we go through a bunch of risk questions with the, you know, whatever the behavior the person's displaying or telling us, or they've, you know, if they've committed any acts, I guess. And then the, the app will, will basically recommend apprehension or not recommend apprehension. At the end of the day, it's solely the police officers, at the police officer's discretion, whether or not they apprehend the, the client. But what it does is it streamlines, streamlines our decision making process. And it also provides, makes sure that the members cover off specific questions that need to be asked of people that we're dealing with. And the most exciting part of it is that it sends a, sends the report to the hospital that we choose. And it provides the emergency room with the background and the information and who we're bringing to them. So interior health is fully signed on board with it. All of the interior health hospitals are now set up for this. We are just waiting for final approval from RCMP Division to roll it out fully above the pilot. It is fully operational in Nelson for Nelson PD Police Department right now. It is operating in Surrey and Prince George and some other municipalities. So where the municipal police have already approved it. So it's a tool, another tool in our tool belt for us to assess mental health clients and also deal with them accordingly. And it can increase the safety for both us and the clients. So super exciting. I'm hoping to see this here launched in our area in the spring. And yeah, we're really excited to have it come about. And it's been proven to work and to reduce calls, reduce apprehensions across the board, where we're, sometimes, you know, you're, you could go either way. And then also what it does, it reduces wait times at the emergency room because we've transmitted the information forward to the emergency room so they can prepare and be ready for when we get there. So because we do have some long wait times sometimes where we spend hours at the hospital waiting for our, the client to be either processed or, or not. So it's kind of a neat, a neat application and kind of exciting.
Yeah, especially here because some of your, your members are by themselves out there. And by the time the second member gets there, if they're tied up with something else, at least they've got something to, to work with. And, you know, great going forward for timely in this world of indecisions and whatnot. And I'm going to say the, where the government actually doesn't, we don't have the healthcare that we used to have with the institutions. And so now we're doing that on the streets. So great safety in it as well. So looking forward to that.
Thank you. And then last but not least, I wanted to recognize one of our police officers, Constable Rachel Mandell. She was the 2024 Alexa Award recipient. So the Alexa Award is given to police officers that are going above and beyond with regard to impaired driving enforcement. So to receive the award, you have to have, have interdicted over 24, 24 impaired drivers in one, in the year. So Constable Mandell, in fact, was over this, you know, had, was over this amount in impaired driving investigations. And so, and she's not the only one. We have other members here that are quite engaged with impaired driving, traffic enforcement, obviously. And every year since I've been here, we've had someone receive this award, if not multiple members receive this award. So I just wanted to give her a shout out for all our hard work within the community and keeping our, our streets safe. So, and I think she's on track and another member's on track this year to, again, receive this award for 2025. So we'll, we'll see how that goes, but yeah.
Well, congratulate Constable Mandell. And from council's perspective, we're grateful for her work and for the other members' work in dealing with impaired driving. It's, in this day and age, it still blows my mind that you're trying to deal with impaired driving. But I'm glad that she's out there doing her job. Any questions, Councilor Cherry?
Thanks, Marisol's. Although it doesn't quite pertain to the secondary, second quarter report, why don't you even give council an update, any staffing changes that are coming up? I know that Hickey's leaving, so yeah.
Through the Chair to Counselor Cherry. So yes, we, as per usual, we have the regular turnover in our detachment. Every, you know, every year we seem to turn over a couple of members. So we have, in fact, we have three members on their way out this, this fall. But as luck would have it, I've already secured two members to replace the three. And we're working on a, on a third one there as well. So yeah, it's just the, the normal kind of flow. We still are somewhat vacant, you know, our, our rotative levels aren't at a hundred percent. But we, we make it work as best we can with the resources that we have.
Awesome. Well, if you can, congratulate Hickey on his promotion and transfer.
Thank you.
Counselor, anything else for Staff Sergeant Dodds? So Staff Sergeant Dodds, thank you again. Staff Sergeant Bay, thanks for coming up and for Corporal Blue Bay, appreciate you being here. Thanks again for what you do for our community. We're appreciative of that. Looking at the 30 kilometer zone, I'm concerned about what we're going to do with that because it's not working in front of my house. But, you know, I've spoken about safety in my neighborhood and road safety and whatnot. Mr. Black's assured me if we put a couple more bottles in, that we'll be able to calm things down. We'll, we'll get it under.
Traffic.
There we go.
Everybody's a traffic engineer.
So more drivers than on your streets are.
All right, we're going to go back to wastewater treatment update, Mr. Black.
See ya.
So we just take a moment, one or two, just go to the washroom. Okay, go for it.
You taking a break?
Yeah, we'll take, Ms. Dellison, we're just going to take a brief break for washroom. We're ready if you are. Apparently it was brilliant. I didn't know, so I'm yapping on. Anyway, we're good.
I am ready. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Black, we are going to deal with item nine B wastewater treatment plant monthly update.
It's very serious report here today. Um, hopefully it'll take about four and a half minutes of which.
I got questions.
Francesca, Miss Williams, can you, uh, run the video, please?
I hope you've all been doing this in spare time, right before bed, keeping track of the, uh, construction.
My friends invited me to the movie theater last night and I said, no, I've got a different one to watch.
Can you guys see a black screen at the moment?
Yeah, yes, we can.
Sweet. That's gonna change. Enjoy.
We're gonna start from, uh, August. I know you've all seen this part. For the community.
The groundworks are coming along rather well. This will be the last, uh, portion of the week coming up. And, uh, so this is the, uh, the slab where all the equipment will live. The project, right? Um, the next steps here, uh, just get stopped. Getting the, uh, the rebar down and, uh, we're techni- technology.
That's the last slide that I have on the video.
Okay. Um, so that's the, uh, forework, the, uh, form for the, uh, next slab of concrete going down. Work to date is, uh, the steel for the bottom half of this slab is done. The top slab or the top rebar is, uh, almost ninety-five percent done. And then the wall, um, rebar will be complete by the end of week and we'll be pouring this slab in the next, uh, week and a half. Uh, we've got, uh, blankets on, on site and heaters to keep it all going. Um, steps after that will be actually forming the reactors and the walls in the reactors. Project is, uh, on schedule. And, uh, today we're, uh, pretty much right on budget. Um, the report does identify ninety-five hundred dollars in change orders out of twenty-three million six hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So relatively minor at this point. If I can continue that trend over thirty-six months, times sixteen, we're in really good shape financially. That's it. We are on schedule. Weather's cooperating and we wanna, uh, see how far we can get, uh, before the weather starts making life difficult. Project will continue. Um, to date, province has been, uh, occupied. Um, we are still waiting on an operational certificate or draft operational certificate. So that will define the requirements for discharge, um, of the plant. And that is in the province's hand, which we expect to see in the next few months. Um, however, it will not be required until we turn the key on this. We have hired a independent environmental monitor or professional to, uh, perform third-party, um, reviews of the site and, uh, make sure the environment is not being damaged. And that information will again go to Environment and D F O to, uh, clearly show that we are taking care of the community and, uh, not impacting the environment in any way other than the approved, uh, through the existing wastewater treatment.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Black. Any questions for Mr. Black? Mr. Through Chair, Counselor.
Uh, yeah, just through the chair. We considered a soundtrack to the background. I'm thinking like maybe Changes by David Bowie. We do have Paul Simon working for us, maybe like My Little Town or Bridge Over Troubled Water, if that's what you're talking to me, or something like that.
I would. I'm just looking for that band that we, that changed to the YouTube, so.
That's pretty good.
And that's your one for the year, Paul.
No. Do you know, do we need to have a boat on that, your worship?
No.
I moved the, the Japanese toilet, uh, audio thing, the little button you can press to, to make all these little noises. So it's not disturbing anyone else. Mash the button.
You wait, I'm gonna get some, I'm gonna get some music. Fran, you and I got work to do.
I have, I have the tiger.
I have the tiger. Oh my god.
All right, Chad, thank you. We're gonna move on to, uh, Development Services Quarterly Report. Simon.
Your worship to all of council. Staff have prepared an incredibly comprehensive presentation for council with a couple of news in there if, uh, if they would like to see. For Mr. Black. Uh, through your worship, no, uh, Mr. Gips is the one who is the luxury of compiling statistics. And if council has any questions, I would defer you to.
All right, good. When do we start?
Staff, if you have any questions you guys may have, uh, this is a continuation of, uh, our previous Q one stats. Uh, hopefully we'll bring you Q three stats here, the next committee of the whole, uh, and then follow up at the end of the year, obviously with the, the full year stats. But, uh, just as a quick snapshot, this is just kind of a wrap for Q two. No significant changes as far as, uh, outside of the ordinary between previous years, Q one and Q two. But, uh, at this point, I will leave it with you. If you have any questions for us.
Mr. Paul. Yeah, thank you for the report. It's good. A, uh, comment that I made to some of the other departments, uh, is, it's good. I like to see the year-over-year, maybe a little just on an annual basis, but at least, at least two years or five years, or you can sort of see those trends. Uh, but yeah, it's good. Thank you.
Anyone else? No, uh, no, uh, other comments? Counselor Stevenson, or for Counselor Lucial online, any questions about, uh, um, potholes or crayons or anything like that?
No.
Nothing? Blank? Okay. Oh, oh, things are good. That's an hour and a half you're asking for, Mr. Black. Oh, all of a sudden. Counselor Cherry and Counselor Paul.
Thanks, Mirzalz. Uh, just curious about, uh, building permit valuation. Um, looks like we're trending significantly at the low end compared to 2024. Just looking for some rationale and some comments about that outside of the global economic conditions.
Uh, through your worship, uh, to all of council, uh, yes, so we are seeing a little bit of a reduction in comparison to previous years. Beyond the, the global challenges as far as people scaling back a lot of their projects, what it results in is we had a couple of very, very large building permits issued in 2024 specifically regarding large multifamily developments. These are the apartment buildings that have very high construction values that do skew the, uh, construction values for the year. Those projects tend to span over a couple of years, so we don't see that continued revenue each year as the buildings are being constructed. Whereas, uh, as a whole, yeah, construction is staying fairly consistent. We are seeing a down, a decrease in residential construction, that, sorry, single-family residential construction, whereas we are seeing the increase in the multifamily side. But overall valuations will be down this year in comparison to previous years, just strictly due to size of these larger multifamily buildings.
Thank you, Mirzalz. So just further to Mr. Simon's presentation on vacation rentals. Um, not asking for it now, but that might be interesting information, again, the trends and also the type of, um, inquiries are, that are happening with those vacation rental stats. That might be helpful. And that's really getting back to that question. Okay, what is, what is the problem? What are we trying to fix? Thanks.
Any other comments, questions? I, uh, I'd like to graphic for, uh, the new bylaw, uh, in that, uh, bylaw officer Carlos is gone. Need someone new. Appreciate the report, uh, having all this information is definitely, uh, really something for us to see. I mean, you look at the values and all the work that's going on in the community. And when I hear other communities where there's building going on, but it's not as much as what we're doing here in the bigger community, right? It's a blessing to that. So thank you guys for streamlining that, being able to get that through. So people are actually able to, you know, find nails and get things done. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Other comments? Thank you again, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Uh, we are now going to, uh, I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into camera. Pursuant to section ninety point one A, D, E, and K of the community charter. I'm missing a few, uh, few letters, but not many, I think. So I'll make a motion for it. Counselor Ron, or Counselor Del, all in favor? Motion, Mr. Cherry. Thank you. Let's go right into it. So I'm gonna call the in-camera committee of the whole meeting for our code sixteen twenty twenty-five.